Duke, you suck.
Welcome to the Duke, you suck podcast. And now Duke Durango.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Duke, you suck podcast. I'm here with my good friend, PWA referee, absolute stud golfer and Calgary candidate for Ward 11 city councillor, Rob Ward. Rob, welcome to the show.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I've, I've been waiting for this for a while. I, I'm the one who said you should start a podcast. I'm sure I'm one of many, but you're such a good talker. How can you not have a podcast? Like, come on?
I never, that's one thing I never took myself that seriously. Do you know what I mean? It was like, nah, I got nothing. No one wants to listen to what I have to say.
Oh.
And you know, on average, a hundred and fifty people want to listen to what I have to say.
It'll grow. You're, you're too good of a talker for people to not listen to this. So hopefully we'll bring some more views to the channel because I listened to them all. Actually, I was listening to your last two episodes ago, I guess it would be now with Kurt Sorokin, who is the head honcho of PWA. And I didn't get through it all, but you guys were talking about fast food for like forty five minutes. And I'm like, this is golden. This is good stuff.
Yeah, you know, there's a reason some people edit.
Editing's overrated. Just let it flow.
That's right. You know, that's I just want, like, I, I've talked to a couple of people that are people I don't know to come on a program. And I've always said, this is, I'm just giving somebody as small as the platform might be, this is your platform. So if you want to ramble on about whatever, you know, you want to ramble on about, I'm going to give you an open floor. And sometimes, you know, sometimes there's some gold in there and sometimes there isn't.
It was gold. I learned so much about the, I liked Kurt's, the A and W lollipops. I didn't know about that. So that's good info to have.
Yeah, now my life will be complete. I can go to get a lollipop at the A and W.
There you go.
Yeah. Okay. Enough about my stuff. How are you? What's going on with you, man?
How I'm?
Yeah. Sorry. Go ahead.
I'm good. You know, it's, uh, it, it, it's obviously, it's been a tough year. I work in marketing and IT consulting and it's hard for businesses to spend money on marketing right now because they're not making so much money, but finding creative ways to do things, a lot of online work, a lot of video work and you know, obviously I haven't seen the family as much, but that's, you know, you see them once in a while and you keep connections with video calls and phone calls and you know, golf actually has helped me a lot. I won't lie. That's what's kept me sane in the last year. So you know, you go out and play golf with some buddies and you know, you're fifty yards apart the whole time or whatever. So it's pretty safe, but.
That was one of the things you and I had huge conversations about is the ridiculousness, you know, last year at the beginning of COVID. And I know COVID is a polarizing thing and everybody has an opinion on it. I mean, when you started saying like, well, you should shut down golf courses. Because you know, it's an elitist sport anyway. Well, that's literally, that's the worst argument in the world. It's the easiest thing in the world. You know, if I have to social distance it, anything golf's the easiest thing in the world to socially distance that.
Yeah. I mean, back then I talked about how I thought it was so funny that the dog parks were open, but they were talking, well, they did close the golf courses. I'm like, okay, well, the density of the dog park is significantly more dense than at a golf course. And the other thing, you know, people talk about the whole elitist of golf. The last year has proven that, that, that's not really the case anymore. There's been a lot of people have picked up golf. I mean, my partner Kristen, she's, she joined the golf course this year. She's now playing, which is great to see. And a lot of companies like Callaway and Titleist and Taylor Made, they, they sold out of beginner sets last year. You couldn't get a beginner set of golf clubs last year because so many new people were picking up the game that it's, it's reached, you know, juniors, it's reached women, it's reached even lower income. They're playing in the city courses and out of town courses. So
Right.
It's strange, but of all the things that happened during COVID, golf actually benefited a lot.
Well, I mean, the thing is golf is to me, you know, obviously wrestling will always be my first love, but golf for me is one of those things that it is for everybody because and it's a game. There's not a lot of things that you play where you call the rules and fractions on yourself. And I think that people that play, I mean, don't get me wrong, there's cheaters in every sport. So I don't want to, you know, I don't want to sound too elitist. But at the same time, it's a game of high integrity, right? Cause you're calling, you legitimately are calling penalties on yourself. And a lot of, a lot of people are honest enough to call, so to me, if somebody tells me they play a lot of golf, you know, right or wrong, immediately I sort of like, okay, this person is probably of somewhat high, you know, and truth is somewhat, you know, at least middle, middle class income, you know, higher intelligence, you know, a little more integrity about what, how they live their lives because they are calling penalties on themselves. And for right or wrong, that's literally how I sort of, you know, deduce that.
For sure. And there, and there's always exceptions, right? Like I've, I've played in tournaments or events with guys and I've, I've seen some stuff, but generally speaking, most guys are, yeah, I'd say at least ninety percent of guys are very honest and truthful and
Right.
I, I just like golf for the social aspect. I mean, I've played other sports growing up. I played soccer. I did hockey. I did amateur wrestling in high school a little bit. And that it, it's hard to have a conversation with somebody when you're huffing and puffing on a soccer field or an ice rink or something. So I'm a social being. I think you know that pretty well. So, um, yeah, golf is just, you know, you spend for two hours or four hours with three other people. Sometimes it's your friends. Sometimes it's people you just met and it's great. You get to know people really well in that time. That's why I like it.
Well, and that's, you know, like you say, oftentimes you're playing with at least, you know, one person you know, but I can't, I've only, you know, and, and I've, I've not played, you know, I probably not played as many rounds of golf as you.
No.
Very, very few experiences with people that I would say like, I don't want to golf with that person again.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? That's really like, I can probably count on one hand, you know, how many times in, in a decade or so that I've been a little over, maybe fifteen years I've been playing golf, but um, yeah, it's been a really, really known number. So to me, that's a pretty good track record.
Yeah. I mean, like how that, I would say that's almost incredible in a way. Like what is their sport? If, how many times, I don't know if you've ever played hockey growing up, but I've played hockey with, uh, you know, drop in leagues and stuff like that. And there's, it's far more often that you find a guy that you're like, whoa dude, calm down, like.
Yeah. I spent a lot more time with the ODR and the, and the shinny. We, you know, we were, we were in that lower, lower income class. So there wasn't a lot of money for hockey, you know, but.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I didn't get too seriously into hockey. So it is, is the same thing. ODR, like street hockey or ball hockey. And but yeah, still you'd get that one guy where it's like, dude, this isn't the NHL. You don't have to hip check that guy at the blue line.
Yeah. Yeah. We're not playing for money. And that's, I was playing a little bit of volleyball. I took some time off wrestling. And my brother was asked playing like beer league volleyball. And you know, I'd go to this volleyball and there were so many exactly what you described, like these assholes that like I can remember kind of laughing at one guy and saying to him like, hey, man, you know, this isn't the Olympics, right? Like you know, when you go home tonight, you don't actually win anything. It's okay.
Yeah. Some of us have to go to work tomorrow. Calm down, buddy.
Yeah. You know, this is, if you're, if you're playing this level of volleyball, don't think you're going to the next level, sir.
Never know.
Did you ever watch the movie? I'm just gonna steal the conversation over wrestling. All of a sudden, you ever see the movie Beyond the Mat?
Yeah, I feel like I did. Yeah.
Like you did. And there's a scene in there where this guy's a referee and he knows Terry Funk quite well. And he's bouncing on a trampoline with dumbbells in his hand. Cause you know, he'll, he never knows when he's gonna get the call. So he always.
Oh God, uh, it's so true. Yeah. I was gonna ask you, cause I was thinking about this before I came on, if you had to pick your three favorite courses in Alberta that you have played, what, what would you pick? See now I'm asking you the questions.
Yeah. For sure. For sure. Winter green would be my top. Um, yeah. Of courses I played absolutely for sure. I really liked the layout of the course. I like the elevation changes. Um, you know, the things, the only things I would change about that course are, are literally cosmetics. To be honest with you. I mean, I'm not somebody that comes in and critiques design. I don't take golf that seriously. But I really like everything about that course. I, you know, um, probably my second favorite course, actually, and thanks to you is Willow. Oh. The, the few times I've played that course, it's always in, to me, like, I played, um, TPC Scottsdale.
Right. Stadium course.
Yeah. And, um, TPC Las Vegas as well. And, um, you're, that course is in, is nice shape as any course I've ever seen and played on, you know? And so to me, that's a big deal. And then obviously I, I played, I had the chance to play Pritis and that, and that course, it's pretty ridiculous.
Pritis is awesome. Yeah. I'll have to tell our superintendent that you like Willow that much. I mean, he does. Yeah. Our, our superintendent is Brian and he does an outstanding job. The guy cares so much. So.
Well, and again, I like the layout, like it's, it's treeed in, like the fairways are definitely, you know, it's, it's not, it's treating, but it's not target golf. Like you, you know, if you miss, you get punished, but you can still, you can find your ball and you know, chip your way out of trouble. You know what I mean? So I think it's a really, it's a, it's not, it's not a pushover of a course, but it, you can still get out of trouble. You're gonna, you're gonna take your medicine, but you're gonna be able to get out of trouble.
It's also interesting how it's like literally in the middle of the city. I now it is in the middle of the city and in the middle of a community and you just, you wouldn't really know that. It's, it's quite an escape. It's interesting.
Yeah, there's a, there's only one place where I'd say it sort of intersects with the community. And that's when you're driving up, uh, I believe it's KDA drive and you sort of just drive by that one. Is that?
Yeah, the par three. Yeah.
So yeah, no, that course is always, you know, you drive by and it's always in immaculate shape. Like it's, it always looks so nice. So yeah, I really like Willow.
I was thinking about my three and so last year I was, uh, super lucky. I got to play Bams Springs. Have you ever played there?
No, it's, it's on the list. Do you know?
We're going, we'll make it happen.
Yeah.
So Bams Springs, I, I think that'd be my number two. My number one, I think for sure is Stewart Creek. Have you ever played there?
No.
Oh, we have some golfing to do, my friend.
Well, now that you're missing playing, we gotta force them, right?
Yeah, exactly. You, me and yours. Yeah. Um, and then number three, I think I'd go with Pritis. Honestly, I would.
Okay.
I like that course a lot. I mean, I, back when the LPGA was here, I helped out with that tournament and I kind of fell in love with it. They're just walking with the players and seeing how they kind of strategize the course and
Right.
I, I, yeah, I just like it. I don't know why.
It was, I love, I mean, I'm definitely more of a mountain course guy. You know, like I've, you know, I've been in BC there. I don't know if you've ever played golf up in Nelson.
No, I don't think so.
There's a few courses up there like bow, there's a course called Bow Four, another course called Kokoni Springs. And a course right in, um, it right in Nelson called Granite, I want to say Granite Point. And that course, like you cannot walk that course. It's absolutely unwalkable. Like, well, I mean, you could walk it, but you're gonna hate yourself about the fifth hole.
Yeah.
Like it's, it's steep. So, but those courses, I mean, I really, really, I appreciate a mountain course. And then, you know, second to that, I like a park course, you know, like obviously like Willow, um, because I, links courses are cool, but I don't like looking for my ball in the grass. I know it sounds kind of petty, but I, I just like, I don't mind being penalized, but I don't want to lose my ball.
Yeah. Like I think of a course like Soraco, which is, I think it's beautiful. I think it's a really nice course, but what you say is it's like, if you miss the fairway, good luck.
You know, and when you, and when you're A, not as, not as accurate as a lot of people off the tee box and stuff that it gets to, you know, even if you're playing cheap balls, it gets to be an expensive round.
That's so true. Even like, when we've played down in Arizona, there's courses, you know, like you put into the desert and you're like, do I really want to go with the rattlesnakes and all that? Or should I just, you know, it's a three dollar ball. I like my legs. I like my hands. I don't really want to go get the anti venom.
Well, especially where the, you know, there's a sign, right? If they have to sign it, how many rattlesnakes are actually in that area?
Exactly. Yeah. I've been lucky. Like I've, I've obviously played quite a bit down in Arizona, but I haven't, uh, I think I've only seen one snake before and it was like in the middle of the fairway. So it was out kind of sunbathing for the day, but, uh, yeah, no, no, no close encounters yet. Lots of wild pigs down there, which was interesting.
Really?
Yeah.
Only thing I've ever really noticed are them little tiny rabbit things.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't know if they are rabbits. I don't really know.
Snake bait.
What are they called?
Snake bait. Literally.
Seriously?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're really cute. They're just little, they all look like baby rabbits. Um, but yeah, no, I, last year I was playing in San Diego, I guess. And one of our party hit the ball like right over, right through the green into the, into the shrubberies. And, um, you know, I go in, there's a coursework there who English was probably the second language. And I say, you know, did you see the ball go by, you know, it's kind of just pointed. So I go, kind of go in there. Grab the ball. We finished the hole and as we're driving away, I kind of looked back and I see a sign that says like, yeah, this, and there's a lot of snakes in this area. Like, you know, just like, well, geez, man, you think the guy would have said that? Like, don't go in there.
I have, yeah, my best story from golf was it's the Chubbs Peterson story, basically from Happy Gilmore.
Right.
I was playing down in Florida and I hit my ball over the green and I went to go get it or find it. Or no, sorry. It was my friend's ball that I was playing with. He hit his over the green. I was like, oh, don't worry Jay, I'll go get it. And I went over the green and I like bent down and I picked up the ball and then I came back up gator like six feet away. I have never run so fast in my life. I swear to God, I could have won the Olympic hundred meters. I was like sprinting. And my buddy, he knew something's wrong. He's like, I've never seen you run that, run that fast in my life. Yeah.
Yeah.
So we, he went back and I think he got a picture of it, but yeah, I was, that was scary.
Yeah, that, and that's, that's one of those things. Like I don't care what ball I'm playing. If I'm down in Florida, if the ball goes near the water, it's okay. That's lost.
It's a really good idea.
Or I'm gonna have the ball picker out all day.
You all, the local Floridians are like, oh, I'll just go get it. It's not a big deal. Yeah. Okay. Whatever. I'm good.
Did you see, I forget who it was on the, I can't remember the guy's name, but he was definitely, he was an Australian or a New Zealander. And there was a, a gator on the course down in Florida and he walked up and slapped it on the back to get it into the water.
Who was that? I can't remember who that was. Yeah.
Yeah.
Somebody I remember seeing that clip and I was like, my God, like.
He made me feel like less of a man that day.
Yeah, I would, I would not have done that. There's no way.
Yeah, no, I'm in a cart zipping by that thing as fast as that cart will carry me. Like forget it.
Brand new Pro V one just out of the box. Who cares? Leave it.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. But you can have, that's a gift to you, alligator. So how many, how many rounds you plan on getting in this year? Have you, do you have, do you, would you start the year with like a, um, sort of a number in mind?
Yes. So last year, I mean, obviously last year was very different, but my goal last year was a hundred and I played a hundred and six, I think it was. So I hit that. This year, I mean, obviously with the campaign, things are going to be a lot more busy.
Right.
Fifty.
Yeah. I think last year I got maybe, I don't think I hit thirty. I think I, you know, twenty five, twenty six rounds.
Yeah, I'm very good at planning my time. So like, you know, if I'm doing campaign stuff during the day, it's like, I'll go with, uh, Kristen to play nine holes at night or something. And
Right.
Yeah, I find the time when, when something you're passionate about, you, you find the time to do it. So.
Yeah. How do you find, how do you find playing with Kristen? Cause I, you know, obviously you've played golf with her before. Now that she has a membership with you though, um, do you enjoy it? Like, do you find? I've, I've, you know, not tweaking about me, but I find sometimes like I like playing with my wife so much. I love playing with the boys, but I was like, I wish my wife was here. As cheesy as it sounds, it's the truth, right?
Yeah, I know. I, I'm the same way. Like, uh, she never, we'd play the odd city course or nine hole course together, which I always enjoyed. Um, the funny thing is she's always said that I should be like a PGA pro giving lessons and stuff. Cause I, I am pretty good at that, like helping people with their golf game. So.
You are good at critiquing people.
Exactly. You're, you're terrible. Let me fix you. Yeah. Um, so I always like playing with her because I feel like I, I, I get like the sort of pleasure out of seeing progression. So even, you know, when we used to play years ago, she quite admittedly wasn't that good. She could barely get the ball airborne. And now she hits her driver and I'm like, Jesus, like where did that come from? So it's, it's, it's fun to watch her progression is kind of the coolest part for me. And obviously I love just spending time with her outside, of course, just like you do with Wendy. So.
Yeah. Well, and golf's a hard game. Do you know what I mean? Cause people, the pros you watch on TV, it looks so easy. Oh, you just take a club back at the ball. You know what I mean? And so when people start playing, it's, you know, the first time you go out and you realize you're absolute dog shit at it, you kind of realize like, okay, I'm gonna have to put some time in to figure this out, you know?
It's hard. I mean, it's, it's a sport that, uh, if you, if you don't practice and work at it and want to work at it, I think that's the biggest thing is wanting to improve, then it's tough. I mean, I have family members that have played for twenty years and, and they don't get any better, but it's because they're not able or willing to put in the time to get better. So it is a frustrating sport that way for sure. Like here, and even here in Canada, we're at such a disadvantage because right as you get good, the course is shut down. So then you have to like restart next year. So
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it's tough, but it, it can also be one of the most rewarding sports because there's nothing quite like, you know, oh, I beat my personal best. Oh, I got that hole in one, or I got that first birdie. It's, it's, it's cool. That's why I like it.
There's, and people, if you don't play, you'll, you know, it's same with pro wrestling. If you've never done it, it's hard for you to ever get it. And if you don't play a lot of golf, or if you've only been out once or twice, there's just something about a golf ball doing exactly what you wanted it to do. That's extremely rewarding.
Feeling of power, isn't it?
Like, it's just like, man, that's exactly what I wanted that to do. And honestly, I only do it twice, three times around. You know what I mean?
Back, but it brings you back.
Yeah. Like you hit, you know, you hit eighty five shots and three of them are exactly what you wanted the ball to do.
It happened to Kristen, even we played nine holes the other night. And I think on the final hole or second last hole. Yeah. She had an amazing drive and she drained a big putt. And I said to her, as she got her ball, I said, that's what's going to keep you coming back for the next round right there.
Oh yeah. The smile on your wife's face when she makes a birdie. Do you know what I mean? It's just the, one time Wendy and I were playing and she chipped in from, well, well, not chipped in pitched in from like ninety yards out on the ninth hole at wintergreen, which is a pretty, you know, it's a tough hole, steep uphill. And, um, yeah, you know, we're looking for a ball and I'm like, you better go look in the cup. And sure enough, and she, you know, she, you couldn't have beat the smile off her smile, off her face that day. She was so excited.
It's what it's all about. The good memories.
That was probably five years ago and she'll still talk like, hey, do you remember that time I made?
It's like me with my hole in one last year. So it's now every time we got him a twelve tee at Willow, I'm just like, I made a hole in one on this hole once. I hope you know that.
Pretty soon people will be saying it to you before you do, hey, Rob.
Yeah, that's starting to happen already.
Hey, Rob, didn't you make a hole in one here one time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Six hundred and one ninety one. I remember it well.
Well, and that's, you know, like, that's one of those things. I've never had a hole in one. I've been, the closest I've been is literally within my putter, the width of my putter head.
Yeah.
You know, if the ball would have rolled left instead of right, it would have went in the hole that day. But you know, that's golf, right? Like that's the way she goes. So what club did you hit? Like what?
Mine, so it's funny. So my brother-in-law, whose name is also Rob, we were on the tee box and it was one ninety one. It was the first kind of men's night of the year. So men's league.
Right.
It was one ninety one and I walked to the box and I had my five iron and I, Rob said to me, he goes, so what do you hit? And I said, I think I got a five. And he goes, a five iron? Hit your six. Like, cause this.
He's offended by your five iron.
And so I go back to the bag, I grabbed the sixth iron and I just, oh, absolutely flushed it like six iron of my life. And we, it, it, you know, it's, it's across the water and it's uphill a bit. So we, we weren't sure it was in, but we were pretty sure. And so if we walk across the bridge and I didn't see a ball and I knew it was in. And, uh, so yeah, I always say, you know, I kind of owe Rob half that hole in one. Cause if I hit a five iron, it wouldn't have gone in.
Nice caddy work, Rob.
Yeah, I owe him. I owe him forever.
Yeah. So now pretty much if Rob ever tells you which club to use, you just nod and smile and pick it up.
And it's funny. Yeah. Cause now he, he, I don't know if he does it on purpose, but he always asks me what club I'm hitting on tee boxes.
Right.
And I, yeah, sometimes I'm like, you know, a four iron, what do you hit a six, hit a five? And I just go back to the bag and like, well, he was right once. How can I argue with him?
I got a hole in one because of this person's advice, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. The day it doesn't work though, you're gonna be like, you son of a gun.
Yeah. Damn it, Rob.
Yeah, that's what you do. If, you know, if he tells you which club to use and, and you, you know, shank it somehow, you just let him know. Like, you know, that's your fault. You jerk. I hope you're happy.
He's the king of the shanks. So I don't.
Is he?
Yeah. He's a really good player. He's actually, I think, well, he is better than me, but yeah, he gets the case of the shanks every so often. It is hilarious.
I'm just starting to come back. Like my tee box game is just started. Like I was at the range here earlier in the year and I hit like, you know, say eight or 10 drives and six of them I would have been able to control enough to get in play.
Yeah.
Right. Where last year, I don't think I pulled my driver once. Well, I pulled my driver a couple of times, maybe three times on the golf course last year. Like it's, uh,
Sometimes it's good to put it away. When I, yeah, I played in that Shaw charity classic. Uh, I was lucky enough to play in the Pro-Am and I couldn't, last year, I don't know if you knew, but I had really screwed up back last year. So I couldn't hit a driver properly.
Right.
This was two years ago even. I don't remember. Yeah.
It was two years ago, two summers ago.
I had a really bad back. So I couldn't hit a driver properly. So I was hitting three wood and, uh, the guy we were playing with, I can't remember his full name. It was Tom. He almost won the tournament. Unfortunately, he kind of choked on the last hole. And yeah, I hit a three wood on at Canyon Meadows would be there. I think it's our eighth hole. It's a long kind of par four and I hit a three wood and I just cranked it like, I think it was over three hundred. And he, in his American accent, he goes, damn son, if you can hit a three wood like that, why the hell do you hit a driver for? Good point, sir.
You don't need a driver at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's moments like that. We'll never forget. That's why I play golf.
Well, and again, that's, that's what brings, you know, golfers together, right? Like that's, you know, there's a guy you don't know that's paying you a huge compliment on the golf course. If that's,
Yeah.
You know, people that don't play golf, you know, it's, it's kind of like pro wrestling to me. If you, if you don't, uh, you know, what's the old saying that about pro wrestling is those people that, that don't get it never, or sorry, I'm making a mess out of that. This, this will be the first edit of my podcast. You know, um, so for people that love pro wrestling or, or that sort of see pro wrestling for what it is, um, no explanation is necessary. But for people that don't, don't watch it or don't get it, no explanation will ever do. And golf's the same way. Do you know what I mean? Like it's, people either love it or they just think it's ridiculous, right? Like I had someone chirping off to me about the environmental impact of golf the other day. And I let the, I let the young person make their point. And, uh, I quickly replied, I said, okay, you know, I'm not going to say it's the best. I said, but you know, it creates a lot of jobs and you know, there's a lot of positive things. Like there's a lot of stewardship that goes on with golf courses that, you know, somewhat helps the environment, you know, keeps, you know, sort of keeps things nice. And, um, and then I said, you know, the other thing I guess you could do is, you know, if you're really worried about the environment, you could probably go talk to the people that like Sobeys and stuff about their open air freezer and coolers. Like, you know, those things are, those things can't be good for the environment either, you know, what? So it's funny how people pick their.
Yeah.
You know, they pick their cause and sort of because, you know, that, you know, golf is this evil, you know, evil elitist, bad for the environment. And I'm not saying that there's no carbon footprint with golf. Please don't.
Of course there is.
Trying to come around us that way. Um, you know, but at the same time, um, you know, for people to just attack things like oil and golf, it is like ridiculous to me. Like I was talking to somebody a little while ago and I said, okay, if you're so mad at oil and gas, why do you, why don't you go after Tim Hortons and McDonald's and all the fast food chains for having drive-throughs? Because you've got tens of thousands of cars a day idling for how long? Waiting for a chicken sandwich.
Getting zero miles per gallon.
Exactly. So, uh, but it's, and people are like, well, you could never really change that. Why not? You just closed the drive-through. They didn't always have drive-throughs.
Yeah.
Know what I mean? You know, go to seven eleven and say, you cannot have this open air cooler keeping ice cream frozen and not just frozen, like as stiff as it can get. Right? Like it's,
Yeah.
To me, those things are, are, are the real scourge of the environment because they're literally just doing nothing but wasting energy. But nobody brings that up. Nobody wants to have that conversation. It's just, oh, the oil company is bad. Look at their.
Yeah. People always pick their battles. It's obviously personal bias fills into it a lot. I mean, a golf, a golf person is not going to trash a golf course. Whereas, you know, somebody works at a grocery store or owns a grocery store is not going to trash a grocery store. Everybody, that's one thing I've learned over the last couple of years is people's personal biases weigh into their opinions quite heavily.
Oh, absolutely.
It's, it's very obvious sometimes. I mean, even with the COVID thing, um, I don't know if you remember in the early days, I actually did a survey. I put it out there just for fun. I was bored. It was March or April at the beginning of, uh, the true lockdown and I'm a busybody data nerd, so I needed to get something to do. So I sent out a survey just to get people's opinions about, you know, what do you think the lockdowns and how long is a long enough lockdown? And sort of the hidden, we'll call it the hidden agenda of the survey was to see how people's personal biases weigh into what they think.
Right.
And it was very, very clear when you analyze the data that people who are still making a full paycheck, uh, thought, yeah, we should lock down forever. Until this is solved. Whereas people who didn't have a job anymore or received a pay cut where I want this to get going quickly. And there's nothing, I, you know, there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, you gotta look out for yourself, of course. But it's interesting how people will sort of put down others and victimize others or whatever, just because they don't agree with them. Cause their personal situation differs from theirs. I think that's something that we can work on as a human species is understanding of other situations.
Well, I think that, um, you know, now I'm going to get it. Now I'm going to use nerd word. Um, but people don't, well, people don't understand how field of, what's all, simply what you just described is, is the clinical term would be field of experience.
Right. Yeah.
You know what I mean? What shapes, you can, three people can witness a car accident. They won't witness it the same way. And it's not because one of them stupid or they're not paying attention or the, or they're not telling the truth about what they've seen. How literally every experience that they had in their lives will shape how they seen that accident happen.
Yeah.
If you, when you talk to people and you disagree with somebody, it's not that that person, you know, has a malicious intent or an odd, their opinion is different because their life's been different from yours. And I find often, you know, one thing I'll say is poor people or people that maybe that's definitely not the right term, people in a lower income. poor people or people, that maybe that's definitely not the right term, people in lower income demographics would say like, you know, the elitist wealthy need to put theirselves in our shoes and see how we have to live. And that's totally fair and I understand that.
It's valid, yeah.
But I also think it's valid for that person in the lower income to try and look at, look at the life through the lens of the person that's of wealth, right? Cause there's a lot of people out there with inherited wealth and, and that's one thing and that's not a bad thing. But there's a lot of people out there that without inherited wealth that have worked really, really, really hard for their wealth. And some people begrudge them that because, well, you have more than me. Yeah, because I worked sixteen hours a day for fifteen years to build a business, a successful business. And now it's made me wealthy and that's not a bad thing. Profit's not a dirty word, you know, so use, try to look at their field of experience to understand why they feel like they shouldn't have to give you their money. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, and, and I've had a lot of conversations with people about stuff just like that, about um, these wealthy people and how, you know, we use the word privileged and, and that's, that's a valid term, I suppose, but it's not without work. I, I look at, you know, there's a lot of people that I'm friends with, my family is friends with that are very successful and people go, well, oh, look at them, look how lucky they are. Well, you know, I was friends with their kids, um, and they never saw their dad. Their dad traveled the world for weeks at a time and you know, they, they didn't have, you know, their dad wasn't their soccer coach or their dad wasn't there to help them with their homework or.
Yeah, people don't see the sacrifice.
There's huge sacrifices and, you know, that's, they worked for it. Uh, of course, there are people that just happened upon stuff and maybe didn't work for it. I, I'd say that's more rare, though.
I think so.
Yeah, there's, there's lots of, I, I know a lot of companies even in Calgary where they've been hugely successful, but the sacrifice is just massive, like,
Yeah.
they don't have a life.
Yeah.
That is their life. So I mean, I don't know, do they deserve it? Um, maybe they, they took the risk. Uh, I, I know you know, starting a business is a a huge, huge risk. I mean, you get your life into it, you put your savings into it and should these people not be rewarded for taking that risk and working hard? I, I think they should be rewarded if they can get a good outcome out of it. I don't know. It's a tough topic.
Well, and I, I think that's, you know, when we talk about true capitalism or true socialism, um, I think it's a really tough, excuse me, I think it's a really tough thing because I don't think you can, you know, people don't understand like roads are a socialist thing, public schools are a socialist thing, right? Those are things that taxes from everybody go to, to fix. So if people want to say, well, I'm a true capitalist, well, you can't be then. You can't drive on the road because you yourself didn't pay for it.
It's a good way to look at it, yeah.
You know, so but then I was thinking about socialism, why we're against true socialism, because um, I want to see everybody kind of be able to have a decent standard of living. Do you know what I mean? I don't want to see people living on the streets. I don't want to see people living in, you know, sleeping under bridges and stuff like that. And, and I would, I think it's safe to say most people feel the same way unless you're a sociopath or simply a shitty person. So, um, but at the same time, I, I do believe that there has to be incentive for people to work hard and, and create successful business. And if you just tax people to death, um, at some point it becomes a why bother because you, you work so hard.
Yeah.
Simply to build wealth, to give to people. And the perception will be people aren't willing to work for it. Um, and there's a percentage of those people out there for sure. Um, and I think if people knew like, hey, you're going to support more, you know, if somebody came to me and said, hey, Jordan, we're gonna, these are what your taxes are going to. And people that don't work hard and are lazy slobs are gonna get, you know, this much money less. Because we're gonna take that percentage and give it to these people that are on age, you know what I mean? Help those people that legitimately can't work. But the other thing, people that want true socialism, like you and I, before we went on, talked about UBI, um, for people that don't know, universal basic income. Um, if you're for universal basic income, that's not a bad thing, but the question always has to come down to, how are we gonna pay for it?
Yeah.
That's where true socialism creates a problem because it, it kills the tax structure.
You'll, you'll, you'll like, uh, my dad's fun. Well, I don't know if it's his line, but he always says it to me. But we might have froze here. Oh, you're back. Okay. My dad's famous line that he always says is socialism works great until you run out of other people's money. And it's a true fact, right? Like you can tax and, oh, I wouldn't be surprised if he stole, steal stuff all the time. Um, but it's a true point. I mean,
A one hundred percent.
Tax and you can tax and tax and tax people and, you know, there's examples even here in Calgary of very wealthy business leaders that
Yeah.
they got sick of the taxation and they moved to uh, Europe. So.
Yeah, or even just municipalities just outside of the city, right? For sure. So there's. From Calgary out to just the municipality of Rocky View.
Yeah, there's that sweet spot, right? So you have to keep taxation reasonable to help fund things, but if you kind of overstep it, then you're actually gonna come out with less tax revenue. So.
Yeah.
You have to, you have to be careful with that.
Yeah, for sure. Um, yeah, okay, I'm gonna transition with you now because we're gonna move into these politics things and I know once we get going, we'll never come back.
We've already meshed everything a little bit.
Yeah, for sure. Um, one thing people may or may not know is, um, Rob and I know each other truly, we met first through wrestling. Um, I was, I was a tyrant and Rob was a, a ref. And um, definitely capable ref and um, people don't realize how hard being a ref is.
Oh.
And um, so I'm gonna pay you a full compliment and say, you know, you're one of the better refs um, that we ended up working with because you, your timing became really good. You knew what to do, when to do it, and you listened to what we, you know, when we were working in the ring or talking in the locker room, you kind of, you listened to what we, what we, what we told you we needed. And um, you know, so kudos to you for becoming an excellent official, but now, you know, I know you say people may or may not know, but tell the story how you got into wrestling, because I actually don't know, like it was just sort of.
Oh, this is.
You know.
Brutal. I'm gonna get, everybody that works in the wrestling industry is gonna hate me after I tell this story, but that's okay.
Don't think we already don't.
Oh, I'm sure there's a few. So, um, I'd obviously, you know, in grade six or so, I got into wrestling WWE and WCW at the time.
Right.
And uh, I think it was around when I was nineteen or twenty years old, my cousin said that there's a Stampede Wrestling Show happening at the Ogden Legion Hall. And as somebody who'd only kind of grown up on the mainstream wrestling, I said, what, what the heck is Stampede Wrestling? And so he explained it to me and he named, you know, all these Gamma Singh and Dynamite Kid and you know, all these old wrestlers who I'd never heard of, to be quite honest. Now I know who they are, but yeah. But so, and he begged me to come, come to the show, come to the show. And I said, oh, that sounds stupid. I don't know if I want to go. He dragged me there, which my cousin has been known to drag me to many things in my life. So we went and uh, it was right around the time you were in the, our army of darkness.
Okay.
Yes. And I remember we were sitting around row three or five or something.
Sorry, give me one second.
No problem. Is Kat there?
No. I didn't plug in my computer.
Oh, okay. Running out of battery, running out of juice.
Continue on.
Okay, so we were sitting row three or five and I, you know, as a, as a person of that age, a teenager, you know, you have that negative judgmental attitude of this is gonna suck.
Set the bar low, you might be pleasantly surprised.
Well, I, yeah. So, so we get there and I remember uh, Ravenous Randy was one of the first matches and I was just like blown away by how goofy and charismatic this guy was. I'm like, like, what? Is this even real? Like, who is this guy? And so I was just, I was super entertained by it. And then
Oh, yeah.
Now I'm gonna, are you ready? I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kiss your butt. Are you ready? So you had a match, I think it was you and Steel or it might have been you and APOC versus, I think it was Dan Myers and uh, Grizz perhaps? I can't remember for sure, but so it was you two and I remember I, at that point of the night, I had had a couple of drinks, not much. I'm not much of a drinker, full disclosure. But I had had a couple of drinks and so I was feeling a little more vocal, so I thought I'd throw some shots your way. Uh, so I was yelling some stuff and I remember you were standing on the apron waiting to get tagged in and you turned to me and you said something which I can't really repeat. But you, you destroyed me and I was just like, this is awesome. That is like, I was so proud to be just mortifyingly insulted by you. It was just so good. This is awesome. So then we went home that night and I told a couple of other friends about this. I was like, you, you have to come experience this. Like it's not like a WWE show where they just, they're focused on the cameras and they're doing their thing. Like it's, it's an experience, like it is a full building experience. Yeah. You just have to be there, the, the people in the crowd and the wrestlers and the
Oh, boy.
Just, it's, 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 it's truly magic being made in front of your eyes. I brought a couple more friends and then eventually I, the details of this are a little blurry because it's been a long time, but.
Yeah.
Um, I think after the show, yeah, I think, no, so somebody from the roster somehow found me on MSN Messenger. Which I don't know if you knew, it was like a messaging service, like text messaging on your computer back in the day.
Yeah, you bet.
And they messaged me because they found a video, here we go, bring the heat. So they found a video of me and my friends doing backyard wrestling, like on the trampoline and more on the grass.
Right.
Really dumb. Kids, don't do this at home. Seriously, don't. It was pretty dumb. So.
I used to love backyard wrestling, man. Guys would kill each other.
Oh, yeah, we were, we were pretty dumb. Um, but so one of the guys, I think it might have been, it might have been Chucky or it might have been uh, Adam who was training with down at the gym at that time, found the video and they said, you know, like, you guys are good, but you're, you're gonna kill each other. You should probably get trained. And I said, well, I'd love to, but I don't know how. Where do I go? What do I do? And so he said, come to the next show and after the show, you can talk to uh, uh, Theo, Randy Myers.
Okay.
And so I stuck around after the show and talked to Randy and he said, oh yeah, we train every, I think it was every Monday down at uh, Teddy's dad's gym.
BJ's, old BJ's gym.
Right, yeah. So, so I went and trained for a bit and full disclosure, I'm not as tough as I thought I was because I remember the first time, and this is a message for everybody out there, I'm looking at the camera when I say this. When you look at, when you look at a wrestling ring and it looks really soft and oh, that doesn't hurt, it hurts. Because the first time, I'll, I'll never forget, the first time I took a bump in that ring, I was winded for like three minutes. I'm not joking. And I was like, okay, yeah, this is real. I mean, and as with anything, you get a bit used to it. So as the sessions went on, obviously I learned how to bump properly, like land flat, use your arms type thing.
Right.
And but still, I mean, I just, I mean, maybe it's because I had a guy like uh, Chucky or Michael Richard Blaze in the class with me that was just like ridiculous.
Yeah.
BVD was there and obviously TJ Wilson was helping train and I was just like.
Guys were what, sixteen or seventeen at that time?
Yeah. And then, but their talent was just like off the wall ridiculous, like I.
See it then.
Yeah, like I remember the first time, even the simplest thing is like I watched, uh, I'll just call him MRB for now on. I'm so used to calling him Chucky, but.
Same, I have that issue.
But yeah, MRB, the first time I saw bump, I was like, Jesus, like that is another level. Like this guy just knows how to do it. And so, long story short, uh, I trained for, I don't know, a month or two and uh, I just, it wasn't for me, but I still loved wrestling. So uh, I'll give credit to MRB, he said, you know, why don't you still come to the shows? You can help set up the ring, you can do the music. And then one night it was at the Boneless Sportsplex, they needed a ring announcer, because I believe Farren or Sly Stone, as he was called, I believe at the time.
Right.
Make the show. And so MRB went to Bill Bell, who ran Stampede Wrestling at the time and said, hey, like Fledges, he's got a decent voice, at least I think I do. And, and he said, hey, why don't you let Fledge do ring announcing tonight? And so I did. And ever since then, I kind of was doing ring announcing somewhat regularly for Stampede and then with PWA, when Kurt started running in Calgary.
Right.
Thankfully Kurt trusted me enough to do the odd show ring announcing. And then from there, I think it's almost a similar thing. There was no refs one night at the Century Casino.
As often happens.
Yeah, imagine that.
Yeah.
And so MRB again, he said, you know, like Fledge, I think he said, Neil, Fledge trained with us a bit. He gets it. He understands. So why don't you let him ref and yeah, I don't, you know, obviously I've never like done what you guys have done to that level, but uh, even just standing behind the curtain, going to ref my first match, I was, and I, you know me, I don't get nervous. I don't. But I was shaking.
Pretty level-headed.
I was shaking. Oh, yeah. I was nervous. I was like, I'm gonna screw this up, like. But then, yeah, uh, and so, you know, reffing matches over and over and over and obviously that's how I got into it basically was from training with TJ and Randy, Theo, and then ring announcing. Oh, I did music and then ring announcing and then reffing. So I.
Literally worked your way up through the whole, you know.
Yeah, not quite like you guys have, but a little different, but you know, and, and I look back at uh, obviously the last few years before COVID, I busy with life, golf and tournaments and work, and so I couldn't do it as much, which I, I miss it for sure. Um, but so many good memories, like I look back at matches that I've reffed, like I remember when Big Raj came back for a match, uh, what's his WWE name? Jinder Mahal. So a WWE champion and I got to ref his match here in Calgary and I just, I was just blown away and
Right.
I'll willingly admit Raj gave it to me pretty hard that night, so I screwed something up. But I thanked him for letting me know because he was kind of, you know, talking to me about how, you know, passing messages and stuff.
Right.
And you know, he's like, yeah, when I, when I yell at you, when I grab you, come to me and I wasn't. So he ripped me pretty hard, which was good because I learned from it and I never did that again. So thank you, Raj, if you ever do watch this, you taught me something. Um, yeah. Other matches, like, you know, I, I ever have to match with Mickey James up in Edmonton and uh,
Nice.
You know, people that have gone on to WWE, I, I reffed uh, you know, Peyton Royce and tons of guys in PWA. It's truly amazing how many guys have gone from PWA to WWE. It's remarkable. Um, but I always, I, I don't know if you feel the same way, but I think back to when I first started getting into it, back to the old Ogden Legion days and I,
Right.
I look at that roster and I'm like, that was a ridiculously good roster and what a, what a, what a locker room, what a group of guys, like
Yeah.
that was a magical time. Uh, and maybe it's just because, you know, that's when I started. So maybe for you, it was before that.
No, I, I really look at the shows that were ran in Stampede between.
You know, it was about two thousand two to two thousand four, I think.
Yeah, well, even before that, like I would say, so you know, Stampede kind of had a, I left Stampede for a couple of years, right? So um, we, we ran some, like the roster we had on Stampede in, say, ninety-nine, just before TJ and Harry really started to, you know, put on the size and, and get to that next level.
Yeah.
And then when I came back, you know, left there and say two thousand, came back in two thousand one, um, they'd become, you know, kind of the main event guys along, you know, Swift, D and APOC and those guys. Um, so I think I got so spoiled, like people, I take a lot of shit for not doing a lot of traveling. And, and I, and to some degree I get that, but when you look at the guys that I got to work with night in and night out and I, and I was the booker. So it was my choice. I literally handpicked my opponents every night. And when I worked, I came back to work young guys. Because at that time I never worked with the young guys. The young guys I worked with were Apocalypse, Harry and TJ. Um, you know, kind of those next level of main event guys were who I sort of originally not brought up because that's not the right thing. We came up together, but those are to me Hall of Fame rosters, like I'll, I'll.
Oh, yeah.
Those rosters, I, I don't know who I was, maybe Divine, I interviewed Divine this last week. And um, I honestly, in my heart of hearts, believe that those rosters we had, especially in like, say, two thousand two, two thousand three in PWA, independent were probably the best independent rosters anywhere. I really believe.
I, I agree with you. I mean, I, uh, because once I got into Stampede, I started to look at other independent rosters and I was, you know, learning a lot and obviously MRB was like the wrestling encyclopedia, him and TJ. So and you know, they taught me a lot and I learned about other rosters and other uh, indies and it it's crazy how talented that roster was. Like you look at, yeah, TJ and uh, APOC and Harry and Natty and Johnny Divine and like.
Belle Lovitz too, who worked, you know, could, was one of the few, Belle Lovitz was one of very few ladies in that era that could hang with Natty.
Do you know? Right, yeah, because Natty was just an absolute powerhouse and a workhorse, like to steal TJ's term, but yeah, like I, I remember the first time I saw Natty come to the gym and just roll around on the mat with uh, BVD and MRB and I was like, holy smokes, like this girl is ridiculously talented and extremely strong.
Oh, I seen her slap the piss out of a few guys in the dungeon, man.
Oh, yeah, like I, I legitimately wonder, like, obviously there is some uh, stronger and physically bigger ladies in WWE now, but I'm like, pound for pound, Natty has to be, she's gotta be one of the toughest of all time. Like I think of China maybe, but.
Well, even China probably didn't have, like, I know Natty did a lot of, um, and this is where I'm really, really biased, to be quite frank with you, but she worked out with one of my old coaches named Clive Llewellyn. And her and TJ and Harry, that was one of, you know, we exposed them to um, amateur wrestling initially. And then, you know, we introduced them to Clive, who would come down to the pro wrestling shows once we got into it, right? Um, so Clive, this guy is an absolute legend. Um, in my opinion, if he's not in the Canadian, um, Um, so Clive, this guy is an absolute legend. Um, in my opinion, if he's not in the Canadian um Sports Hall of Fame already, he damn sure should be. You know, he's a um qualified for the Olympics two times for Canada, you know, a multi-time national champion. So, but Natty worked out with him. So I don't know if there's a lot of people that being a third, you know, third generation wrestler um coming from, you know, she never competed at amateur wrestling, but she had a lot of training at it. You know, I'm sure she's rolled, you know, TJ has a lot of friends that are in MMA. I'm sure she's rolled with those guys. So I would probably say pound for pound, she's one of the, one of the toughest girls that's ever been in a ring.
Yeah, I would, I would not want to get into a, a shoot fight with her. I think I would be dead.
And I, truth is, I kind of felt really bad for Natty um when she, when she first broke in because she broke in in that really what I would consider to be the, you know, the bra and panties match era.
Yeah.
And you'd watch her and in the dungeon, she worked with men. And so, you know, she'd be doing stuff and we'd be telling her to lay it in because we wanted it to look good. So then she'd be laying it in on those poor little, you know, what were, you know, models. And she was beating the shit out of those girls because they had no idea what they were getting in there with. Do you know what I mean? Like
Yeah.
Natty was not a bra and panties wrestler. She, she was gonna knock your teeth out.
She was a grappler. She was a fighter. Yeah, like it's and how many years has she been in there now? I feel like it's been at least fifteen years because didn't she leave in two thousand four? For two thousand eight? Okay, yeah, like.
Yeah.
It's, it's incredible.
They got signed earlier, but I think she got called up in two thousand eight.
Right, yeah.
She's been on the main roster since two thousand eight.
But it's in, what do you think about it? Like, I, I don't know what it is about Calgary. I mean, I guess it's because we have that lineage and all the good training here, but how many people have come out of Calgary and made it is truly amazing.
Well, even I just say the list of champions that have come through here, you know what I mean? Like it's, there was like, there was a time when Calgary was one of the meccas in North America. You know, there's a few hotspots, right? You look down and sort of, you know, deep south, Connecticut, and then in Canada, Calgary was for sure the place to be, right? There was, you know, Emile Dupree did some good stuff with Grand Prix. You know, I don't want to disrespect any of the other. And then there was a Candelo in Manitoba. But there was nobody that did what Stampede did on a level Stu did it up through, you know, the midnight, you know, from the late forties up through the late nineteen eighties. You know, that's a, that's an amazing run. So then when you consider that, you know, Stu Hart, who had this amazing run, had these kids that started this training school that all had a, a great pedigree. You know, it, you, it's almost unreal when you think compared to other territories because nobody, I don't think any other territory has produced as many stars.
No, it's crazy. And yeah, just the talent and everything about the, the people that came from here, like there's even just sitting here thinking, I'm thinking of all these other ones, like I remember Matthias Wild who went uh, I can't remember his ring name in WWE, Prince Pretty.
Um, come on, Jordan.
We, we know who we're talking about. Yeah, uh, it, it's crazy. And even just uh the other day Kurt Sorokin posted about uh, I think his name's Tony who got.
Yeah, Tony Gil.
With that NXT and that guy. I remember when he first came in to PWA and, and you know, he was, he was all right. He was good. And then as he went, he just, he got so much better. And even there's people now that uh in, you know, right before COVID, I remember that it was a girl named Zoe Sager and her first match, I'm like, okay, yeah, she's new, she's all right.
Yeah.
And then I think I was gone for a few months, came back and I was like, holy smokes, like I remember I said, I said to her backstage, I said, you have come a long way in a short amount of time. Like that was incredible.
Right.
I don't, I don't know what it is about Calgary that these people, they're so good. It's crazy.
And I really do put it down to the training schools, right? Like it's, you know, when you had the hard school, you had kind of a generation of guys that could influence guys. There was a lot of guys we worked with that had trained a little bit, do you know what I mean? But didn't really get, you know, didn't, and I didn't realize this till I kind of started talking to a few fellows in the last little while here. Um, that didn't really get full training, kind of spotty training here and there. And so we got to have an influence on those guys. And then once Stampede was gone, Lance Storm opened his school.
Right.
Um, you know, and it took, you know, and I'm not taking a platform to piss on Lance. You know, first couple of classes of Lance's kids were okay.
Yeah.
Then once he kind of, you know, once he got two or three of those classes under his belt and really refined what he was doing, man, he started turning out stud after stud after stud after stud.
Right.
Like he really turned out a lot of really, really good trainees.
I'll even say, and again, hopefully people will hate me for saying this, but when I was reffing, I remember some of the earlier classes of Lance students that would get in the ring and have their first matches and stuff. I was like, oh God, this is like, this is rough. This is hard to watch. But then towards the end, like his last two or three graduating classes, they came in the ring and I was just like, these guys are good. Like they get it.
Yeah, he definitely, and I, I think T-Bone was probably the really um, or I don't know if Cam went through his school. I don't know if you remember Kamikaze. Um, and I don't know if he was, I don't know if he went through Lance's Storm, but I know T-Bone did. And he was the really the first guy that I recognized. Okay, like, okay, Lance has it sorted now. Like it's.
T-Bone was good.
He knows, like, that was one of those, like, okay, here we go. This is his first star, like this, he's on his way now. And that's um, you know, full credit to Lance because, you know, he, he gives a shit about what, what he's doing at his training school, you know, it's, it's a shame that he, you know, kind of, you know, shut down to go to the WWE and, you know, get into a producer role there. And then COVID hits and he ends up being part of that, part of that big cut, right?
Yeah.
Um, so. Yeah, and, and it's one of those, I hope he does, you know, maybe it's a phase of his life that he's down, but I really do kind of hope he does open another training school because he's, he turns out some good guys. And I mean, he's, he, you know, with his name, he can get some opportunities for these kids, right?
Sure. And then I, I was thinking, huh, what was I thinking about? Something about Stampede. Oh darn, I can't remember. Oh, I was just remembering. I always, so I don't know if you know this, again, I'm gonna kiss your butt a bit here, but um so my family would come to shows a lot to like see me and they just thought wrestling was hilarious. It's a different, for them, it's literally the entertainment. They're not like fans of wrestling. They just think
Right.
spectacle of it is hilarious. But they were always, I had a lot of people in my family that were fans of you just because of what you would say, right? So
Right.
Uh, you know, a few months ago, we had the uh, the Facebook back and forth with uh, when you called somebody's baby ugly. Which is just like, yeah, people that are watching this and don't understand wrestling, they're gonna be like, oh my God, he called somebody's baby ugly, but it's like, you have, you just have to be there. It's, and, and you know, I remember the lady herself, she, she laughed. Because it was so good.
To me, the best part about that whole thing is I never saw the baby. It was like, it was so little, it was in swaddle. I didn't see that baby. I never saw that baby's face. I never seen anything. I just seen her holding a baby.
Yeah.
And it kind of threw, yeah, you and your ugly baby lady.
And I just, I, I know, it's one of those like moments you'll never forget in life. I remember, I, I don't know if I, I think I was reffing the match. I'm pretty sure I was. And so I was in the ring and you said that. And I'll, I'll willingly admit, I have a hard time like concealing my laughter when you do stuff in the ring. So I'm always like, stop. So you said that and then I immediately, I knew where your wife was standing in the crowd. So I looked over at her and she was just like.
Well, it's, it's actually the first time I've said something that I looked at my wife and she was making this face.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that was the face. Yeah, she was mortified. Oh, it's so good.
Like, and she met me at the door when I came home from the show that night and she's like, you should not tell some lady she has an ugly baby. Like that's the probably the only time she's ever that I can think of. That's the only time she ever told me like, you shouldn't say that, you know.
You shouldn't, but
I don't.
Again, this is to the people that don't understand wrestling. It's, it's so different. It's, it's like people literally, we talk about suspension of disbelief. It, it's even further than that. People just like check reality at the door.
Oh, yeah.
They're just there to be entertained. It's almost like a, it's similar to a comedy show where some terrible things are said, but it's funny.
To me, it's just live action improv theater, right? Like, you know, I did a couple of plays and, and I was horrified by having to know all the lines and things like that. Like people are like, oh, did you like doing theater? I didn't, I mean, I didn't hate the experience. I didn't mind the rehearsals and stuff like that. But being on stage in front of live crowd, thinking I was, could forget my lines was really, really horrifying for me. Like I did not like that part. So they're like, well, it's the same as wrestling. It's not. At wrestling, I'm just saying whatever comes to my mind. It's all just my thoughts. So I always kind of would tell people like the best part about being a bad guy is the people pay their twenty bucks, come to the show and they can literally say whatever they want to me and I won't get upset or offended. Do you know what I mean? And as long as they're not swearing around small children, that's, that's kind of the only time I'd say like, hey, you know, that's enough, but um. And I would also say, and I get paid whatever I get paid to say whatever I want back to them, as long as I'm not swearing at them. You know what I mean? And I took that opportunity for everything it was because I said some really rough things to people with, you know, there's very rarely, unless I was doing a bar show, I never use bad language, but I've said some really, really harsh things.
Oh, yeah. But that's why, that's why it was so fun for me. Like that's what literally made independent wrestling. That's what made me go. That's what made me interested in it is because the, the interaction is just, it, it, it's unlike anything else. It's literally, there's no other form of entertainment quite like that in the world, I would dare say. So for anybody who's listening to this who's not a wrestling fan, um, once we are able to go to shows and gatherings again, go, go to a PW, PWA wrestling show and just yeah, suspend your disbelief, have a few beers and just enjoy what is literally just pure entertainment. The wrestling is almost secondary. It's just an entertaining time.
It is, and, and it's truly one of the few things where you can have a true interaction with the people that are entertaining you.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like you go to a hockey or football game and you, people are hollering and cheering and, and yeah, that, that does spur on the players, like there, there is something the players do get from that, but it's not like there's a two-way interaction between the players and the fans until, you know, halftime or the end of the game or whatever, right? Um, where pro wrestling from the minute that show starts to the minute that show ends, there's, there is, or should be anyways, if we're doing it right. Um, a, a, a full-on um immersive, interactive experience between the wrestlers in the ring and the crowd that's attending. And, and that's what I, I absolutely love about pro wrestling.
Well, just think about our good friends that always sat ringside who waited for one Chris Steele to come steal their hat. I mean, that's the reason they came to the shows, right? It's terrible, but they loved it. That's why they come. So.
Were you, now here's where, here's where maybe Chris Steele and I would take it too far. Um, were you, were you reffing the match or were you at the show when um, it was a little kid's like sixth birthday? We didn't know this at the time, but it was a little kid's sixth birthday and he was sitting in a row. And Chris Steele took the kid's hat and shoved it down his pants and the kid started crying.
Yes. I, I feel so bad for laughing.
But Kurt was so mad at us in the back. He's like, you guys, you know, what if they never come to the show again? And I'm like, hey, listen, Kurt, I appreciate what you're saying, but you also have to understand, what'd that kid pay to get in here? Fifteen dollars? I was like, for the rest of his life, he'll remember that. And that's a cheap memory at that price.
It's, it's true. He'll remember that and his dad will remind him of it all the time. Shut up, dad. Don't talk about that.
Oh, his mom went off on Chris Steele. Yeah, she was, she was fairly bitter. Yeah, it was that kid's birthday party. Oh, we didn't know.
I think, yeah, and I think they made it up to the kid. I think like one of the, you know, more popular wrestlers, we'll call them, came out and talked to the kid and it was all good at the end of the night. But yes, I do remember that.
I don't know if I should be proud of the fact that I've made more than one little kid cry, but there's part of me too that somewhat blames the parents, right? Like you, maybe you shouldn't bring your kid to the wrestling. You brought your kid to wrestling. That's not my fault.
I blame the parents that I took that kid's hat and, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's the parents' fault, Jordy. That's right.
Okay, you disagree. We're gonna move on.
Yeah, I think we might need to.
But seriously, like, I'm gonna use the Attitude Era of Wrestling as my example.
Okay.
Which is probably what the extreme example, to be quite honest. But when you take your six-year-old kid to an Attitude Era, Brahm Panties era, Stone Cold Steve Austin, Middle Finger Beer Drinking Show.
Yeah.
Is that Stone Cold Steve Austin's fault or is that your fault as a parent?
Okay, that's fair, but what if this parent didn't know what they were getting into? Oh, we're going to a Stampede Wrestling Show and yeah, Chris Steele is gonna do something like that. I, I, I don't think that was on the card.
Oh, you know, that, that's, I, I will accept that retort. But to me, it's, there's a certain level of responsibility on a parent to know what position they're putting their kids in. Like I firmly believe um, that if you bring your child to Las Vegas, Child Services should be waiting for your ass at the airport.
That's not a bad point.
Right? Like these, these parents that are taking their, their soccer teams to Las Vegas.
Yeah.
Like, what is wrong with you? That's the most selfish shit in the world. Do not take your kid to Las Vegas, people.
Yeah, I, I don't know why you would, to be honest. I mean, I, I've been to Vegas as much as you. I've been once and I'm like, why would you bring a kid here?
Oh, yeah. I just, I see kids in Vegas and I just always think like, what, why are you bringing your kids to Las? One, this is um a true story, man. One time my wife and I, um, there's a little pizza place in New York, New York Hotel called Charocco Pizza.
Yes.
And I've romanticized it in my head as the best pizza in Vegas. And it's like, probably not even a top one hundred pizzas. And I love it. No, chances are I've had a few drinks when I get there and it's right outside the piano bar. So, you know, sit there, crush a few, couple slices of pizza, listen to the piano bar and head back to your room, go to bed.
Beautiful.
Three AM, I'm rolling down the strip back to my hotel. There's a family walking down the street with a child in a stroller. I'm gonna call the kid two years old, between two and three years old. The parents literally have the kid's head tied back to the stroller to stop because the kid's sleeping. And then that way the kid won't fall forward in the stroller when they're walking down the strip. Now, if you're doing that to your child, I'm gonna immediately take you to child, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's, that's a bit much.
Yeah, and that's, and to me that, that was when I kind of said to my wife, like, if you're bringing your kid, that was when I actually came up with that phrase. If you're bringing your kid to Vegas, Child Services should be waiting for you at the airport.
Another famous Jordi-ism.
Yeah, like, but taking your, oh, we're gonna take a soccer team of thirteen-year-olds to Las Vegas.
Yeah.
Get your head out of your ass, parents.
I don't, I don't, I don't, yeah, that will never make, take them to Disney World or something.
Well, yeah, take them to LA, right? Like you still get sunshine, you get the ocean, there's a lot more to do. Don't take your kids to Vegas.
I don't even, like, I think of when I was a teenager, like, you know, pre eighteen, obviously, or twenty-one, I guess, in Vegas. Like, what, what would I do there?
Well, yeah, you can't be in the casinos. You can't, you know what I mean? Like, there's lots to do in Vegas. But, you know, you gotta stay, now, don't take your kids to Vegas.
Yeah, that's your message of the day.
Don't take your kids to Vegas. Plus, when I'm having a good time in Vegas, I don't want to see your kid when I'm walking down the street with beers in my hand.
They don't need to see that.
Yeah, don't exclude, well, and then you got those buses with like the girls and the phone numbers, you know?
Yeah, the guys like fanning the cards like.
Yeah, yeah, girls, girls, girls on the side of a bus with a phone number. Like, is that what you want your daughter exposed to? Come on, smarten up.
That's, that's a good point. That's a very good point.
Yeah, these are the things that Duke Durango thinks about at night.
Good thoughts.
The trippers in Vegas. No, just kidding. Yeah, that's the, that's the way she goes. So now I'm looking at the sign behind you. And um, yeah, I'm looking at that sign and I'm thinking, hey, man, Rob Ward's got something big going on. Tell us about that.
Right, so I uh decided, I think in, I don't even remember when, January or February, that I was gonna run for city council to represent Ward eleven. Uh, so people may or may not know that Ward eleven was previously uh, the, oh, I always called him Alderman. The counselor in Ward eleven was Jeremy Farkas, who is now running for mayor. So there was an opening for Ward eleven. Now I, you know, we, we talk politics quite a bit and politics is a pretty big deal in my family and my friends and all that. So I kind of like, at first playfully threw around the idea of, oh, you know, I should, I should run, I should do it. And not half seriously. And the more I kind of said that, people were like, you know what, Rob, you, you should, you should. And uh, if I don't give her credit, she'll tear me apart. So I'll just say it. Uh, one of the ladies on my campaign team, Diana, she was kind of my final push. So I said, you know, maybe, maybe I should think about this. And she goes, yes, you should do it. And so I was like, okay, fine, I'll do it. And then in case you don't know, I'm sure a lot of people don't know this, but when you decide to run, you have to get a hundred signatures on your nomination form to make it official. And so I kind of said to her, I said, well, I mean, I know a lot of people, but I don't know a lot of people in Ward eleven specifically because they have to live in Ward eleven. So
Yeah.
She literally took me around the neighborhood to meet all these wonderful people and we got a hundred signatures in like a day.
Good for you, man.
Yeah, so between her contacts and my contacts, like, yeah, it was easy, which was really nice. And I met some amazing people and that's how it all kind of started. So the, the campaign is now, what are we in? It's, time flies. Literally, I can't believe it. It's April twenty-fifth today when we're recording. Um, and just the progresses have been made already. It's crazy. We've, we've touched, uh, I believe about seven thousand houses already. Um, we've done interviews with, you know, people like you and other business leaders.
And other reputable outfits.
Yes, very reputable. But yeah, I, I've met a lot of people and it, it, the thing that, you know, at the end of the day, I, I tell people, this, this isn't about, I don't want to be a career politician. This isn't about me trying to get a job or build a career out of this. This is, this is about serving the people of Ward eleven and of Calgary. I mean, I've lived here my entire life. I was born and raised in Calgary, which is pretty rare, I'd say.
Yeah, we're a dying breed, that's for sure.
For sure, yeah. And I, and I like this city. I love this city. I, I hate winter, but I love the city. And I just, I just we've seen the good times. We've seen. And I just, I just, we've seen the good times, we've seen the bad times. And I think Calgary now more than ever has been gut punched so hard. The ener, energy industry obviously is down, the COVID pandemic. And, and it's hit me at a personal level. I mean, I run my own small business and I work, it's, it's, I'm very unique. My small business works with small businesses. So I, I've seen the effects this has had on so many different industries, uh, restaurants, retail outlets, fitness studios. Fortunately, golf courses is one of the few that has actually done quite well, but.
That's what everyone said, actually, now that you mention that, I was talking to, I've talked to, that said rounds were up last year.
Oh, huge. Uh, at Willow Park, we, we blew the record out of the water. I can't even remember what the number was. I'd have to look it up. But it was a huge, huge number of rounds, even the little bit that we've already been open this year. I think the number was, we've already had sixteen hundred rounds played.
Wow.
It's been open for like a week. I don't even know how the heck that many people got on the course, but yeah, it, it's, that's why I'm doing this. And I, I don't wanna be very clear about that is I'm not doing this to, you know, get a job or get that golden pension or, you know, be a career politician. I'm doing this because I, I care about the people in Ward eleven. I care about the people in the city. I wanna be, you know, somebody younger in my life said, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. And I, and I truly believe that. So I wanna be part of the solution.
Right.
Right now in my campaign, I, I don't know. I mean, maybe some people say this is a dumb idea for a campaign, but I'm trying not to make it as much about myself. I'm trying to make it about the people, the people that I wanna help and the people that need our help and that we can make positive changes.
Right.
So that's what it's about.
That's something that, when I looked at a lot of campaigns, you know, um, there's a lot of I, 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 when you, when you hear the, you know, the, from the politicians themselves. And I think that's the thing that's, that's missing is the we. You know, one of the words I picked out specifically from when you were initially talking there is that, is that you said you, you just wanted to serve the public. And you know, that's what people, people forget the term public servant. Yeah, and I keep harping on this, um, you know, with a lack of political accountability these days. Somebody, somebody way smarter than me coined, said this, that, you know, it used to be that our politicians stood up for us. And now our politicians stand up to us.
Yeah.
And I really think, I really think in a lot of cases on our current council and I, I will call out Mayor, Mayor Nenshi personally. He definitely fits that bill. Do you know what I mean? And so, while he has information we often don't have as citizens, um, that factors into a lot of decisions that get made. I think that when you challenge a politician on a decision, if they come back to you with snide sarcasm, I instantly kind of lose respect for the guy because he's just toning down the conversation with rudeness. And, and I have no problem conceding that Mayor Nenshi is, is one of those guys that does that. So I think that one of the endorsements that you'll get from me, Rob, specifically, is that first of all, um, you're an open-minded individual. That I know that in the presence of new information, you're willing to change your mind. You're not necessarily married to an opinion. And, um, I think that's what's sadly lacking in our politics these days.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of the hardest thing that I've experienced so far is, you know, I'm out of respect for people. I'm not really doing a ton of door knocking right now. Not everybody's comfortable with that, but
Right.
I am leaving, you know, postcards of literature at their doors and sometimes they're outside and I'll talk to them and they're okay with that. But that's one of the things that I'm almost challenged with is that people immediately, they wanna know my opinion. Like, one of the questions I get asked is, who did, who do you vote for? And I'm like, well, it doesn't matter who I vote for because I'll tell you right now, full disclosure on this podcast for the world to know, the people that I voted for in the last election, I will not be voting for again, so.
Yeah, I'm in the same boat as you, right? I'm embarrassed I picked the vote I did last.
Yeah, oh, as am I. It's terrible. So that's the hardest part is people wanna know my opinion and my stance and my, and I'm like, and, and I have to tell these people, it's, it's not about me.
Yeah.
Like, I, I have my beliefs, like, you know, like you do. We believe in fiscal responsibility and smart spending and but at the end of the day, it's, it's what the people want and believe in. Like, the top three things that people have told me is roads and infrastructure, taxes and safety, which includes police fire and EMS. That's what matters most to people. And that's, that's what my campaign is about. So we're, we're gonna, you know, look at every dollar spent. Are we getting the best value for that dollar? Is this a necessary spend at this time? Because now more than ever, we can't just be flaunting money around.
Yeah.
We're in tough times. It's time to accept that. And you know, the roads and infrastructure, i- it's the most basics of things that I think we've lost. Uh, satisfaction with the city of Calgary and city council is below fifty percent. That's
Right.
Terrible. I mean, if you think on my website, I, I talk about if a restaurant was rated at forty-three or forty-seven percent, would you wanna go to that restaurant? I wouldn't.
Yeah, that's actually a really good analogy.
So we need to improve that. And, and we do that by focusing, getting back to basics and doing them right. Our potholes on the roads, our, our road clearing, our road design is, you had a good rant the other day. So, but it's questionable at best and I can understand why people are frustrated. And then we go to things like, you know, safety. I'll say straight out right now, I, I know quite a few Calgary police officers, Edmonton police officers. We share a good friend who's an animal bylaw officer.
Right.
And it's, that's a position, God, I feel for those guys. I wouldn't wanna be doing that job right now. It's tough. And, and these people, you know, my uncle's a retired fireman and these people quite literally give their lives for us. And then people need to realize that. Is there a few bad apples? Absolutely. And there's bad apples in every industry and every job. And I, I, I really want those people to be held accountable for the terrible things that they do. But at the same time, to just label an entire organization or career as bad, I, 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 I don't think that's fair. These people genuinely do care and they care about our safety.
Yeah.
They give their lives that are away from their families and I want better for them. I want better for the people. That's, that's, I don't know, maybe that's too soft, but.
I don't think it is, man. Like, nothing, there's, to defund the police movement to me is one of the most absolutely ridiculous statements I've ever heard. And, and, you know, you can attack me if you want and I'll quickly tell you to go to hell. I have no problem saying it. I, I, I'm tired of people with uneducated opinions. Um, here's the thing. If you defund the police, what you do is take away money for training. Do you know what I mean? So if you take away the money for training, what you're gonna have is actually a worse police officer. So to me, if you give the police more money, we can spend more money on training, we can spend more money on salaries. When you, when you make a job more attractive, you'll bring in a better class of people. Do you know what I mean? You make a college degree, you make a call, and this could be a thing. But you make a college degree mandatory. I don't care what your four-year degree is, but I need to know you've been to university and can think and finish projects. Do you know what I mean? We need to, we need to find a way to attract a better class of people because if we defund, we're not gonna attract better people. You're making, you're fundamentally making somebody's life harder. Right? So now, and I'll use, you know, let's say, I'm gonna use the hand-to-hand training that police receive, because I don't know how much they receive. But I'm gonna be perfectly candid with you and this is gonna sound extremely arrogant and negativistic.
I already know what you're gonna say, but go ahead.
With, with my wrestling background and, and not simply pro wrestling, obviously with an amateur wrestling background, I feel there's very, very few police officers on the city police force today that could take me off my feet. And that to me is, I'm a fifth, I'm a forty-eight-year-old man. I'm not in my prime shape. And I would be fully confident if any one of those people approached me, that I could take them to the ground before they could take me to the ground.
And I will jump in. One time we were sparring in the ring just for fun. And for anybody who doesn't believe what Jordy just said. Yeah, it's real. You took me down faster than anybody's ever taken me down in my entire life. It was like, boom, down, Matt, done.
Yeah, and the truth is, I'm the shits, right? So I know multiple guys in this city that are leagues better than I am. And so when you consider that these police officers are, you know, what does he get? Six months of training in the academy? And then we pump them out. Do you know what I mean? That is insane to me.
To one of the hardest jobs out there, too.
Yeah, that, that, you know, well, okay, we should put body cams on all the police officers.
Sure.
I, I get the argument and I appreciate the accountability behind it, but also how well do you do your job when somebody's looking over your shoulder?
That's a good point.
Do you know what I mean? That's, I'm not saying we don't need to do it, but I'm saying that there's, we need to try to look at it from every angle. Because police officers need to know, listen, man, there's sometimes I do things at my job and I'll use safety as, as an example. There's things I do at my job that simply a safety person would look at and say, you can't do it that way. And I would say, well, that's the most efficient way to get my job done. And I know what I'm doing. My head's above water. You know what I mean? I know I'm doing it safely. You perceive it as unsafe. So there's gonna be times because we don't do the job a police officer does. We don't understand what it's like to pull somebody over and know that that could be the end of your life right there. Right?
I don't have that fear many times.
Right. So there's things I do at my job that somebody would call me out on, but they don't understand why I'm doing it and how I do my job. And I think for the average citizen to look at what a police officer does on a day-to-day basis and try and call them out on it, quite frankly, and forgive the language, but that's horseshit. You have no idea, you know, going back to field of experience. You know, you have no idea what that cop's dealing with every single day. So, so let's give them more money. Now, what we do is look at ways we can save money so that we can bring more crisis counselors in and, and things like that to help with these situations. So it's not, because you're right, a police officer is not a crisis counselor. That's a different.
That's where I would jump in, Jordy, is I'd say, one of the biggest, you know, I'm a marketing kinda guy. And so one of the things I think that was done so poorly was to even label this as a defunding the police. I think was a terrible, terrible term to use. I think it should be called reallo, reallocation of funds.
Right, right.
Which I think we can agree on is a good idea. Like you just said, um, a cop is not as trained as, they say, a social worker or a psychologist or something like that. If somebody's in a mental health crisis, I, I, I'd much rather send in a trained professional than a police officer. And then speaking with police officers myself, they agree.
I was just gonna say, if we talk to them, they'll agree a hundred percent.
Yeah, a hundred percent. They're like, I don't know what to do. So like,
Yeah.
I, if we can help them make their job easier by
Yeah.
reallocating these funds, which is what we've done. Um, I, I, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
And, and I wrote, I've been writing down notes as you've been talking. The other, um, I have to, otherwise I forget things. Um, the, one of the problems people see, you know, our police force does have these issues with racism and stuff like that. And I, I did a lot of reading on that and research. And one of the common issues is, and I think I talked about this in an interview with somebody else, is the reporting, there's a fear of reporting, and that's not just with the police, that's in any organization. I've seen it in organizations I've been in myself. Is there's a fear for the victim to report for repercussions towards them, their job from other coworkers. And then there's people that are, you know, third-hand witnesses. Like, if I did something bad and you saw it, you might not wanna report it because then you're like, oh, well, now Rob's gonna hate me or
Right.
I'm gonna get fired because now I'm causing the, you know, trouble in the company.
Right.
And that, that, I think that's what we need to focus on a lot more is making sort of a a way for people to report things where they're not afraid to, that there's confidence that this will get dealt with properly. And I, as I said earlier, I don't think that the police as a whole is a bad organization. There's just some bad apples that need to be taken care of and it needs to be done better, quicker and uh, yeah.
If people are gonna probably come back at me, this is the one place I'll get, I think, some pushback. More of an issue to me than the police themselves are the police unions. Now, here's where this may come across a little controversial, but for me, the police unions that can save a person's job. And I think Derek Chauvin is obviously, um, you know, the current case, um, you know, that's probably on everybody's mind. This gentleman had numerous and multiple, multiple, multiple offenses on his record of, you know, excessive force, police brutality, complaints and things like that. And somehow a union keeps his job. And so to me, the, where the culture, where the police culture needs to change, maybe even not be in the training level. And the, it's in the accountability, right? It should be, you get three, you know, you get three substantiated brutality claims or, or complaints like that, you're finished. This guy had fifteen. What's that?
I say lower than that, three's a lot.
Like, well, three strikes, you're out, right? I mean, everybody has a bad day at work here and there. So I don't, you know, police work is one of those jobs, like being an airline pilot. You can't be bad at your job, right? Like it's, yeah, so when you, when you start getting multiple complaints and then you go before, um, you know, a tribunal and a union can keep your job for you after you've had fifteen complaints, that's not acceptable. And, and that's where I hold.
Terrible.
Yeah, that's where I hold, I don't know who negotiates, I don't know how that gets negotiated, so maybe I should be cautious on what I'm saying, but how is that a thing? How can you have fifteen? If I had fifteen write-ups, how, like, if you had an employee, do you read up, wrote up fifteen times?
They, they wouldn't be there anymore.
Right. Is that on the employer or is that on you at that point?
Yeah.
You know what?
It's interesting that, and it's interesting that you can bring in the union thing to it because I, I, I mean, maybe this is an assumption, but I would say that most people that, uh, are in favor of, we'll call it the defunding the police movement, maybe pro-union, so.
You're probably right.
You're almost contradicting yourself there. So, yeah, I, I, I think this, you know, I don't think there's a grand solution. I think it's, it, it's a combined effort. Everybody needs to kind of work together on this, but the, uh, for me, in all the reading and research I've done, they, just the, the ability for people to report things and for action to be taken and for them not to be afraid of consequences of reporting, I think is a huge first step. I think that's something we need to get done quick.
Well, and we see it at all levels of government, you know what I mean? Where, well, we gotta have these whistleblower laws. We gotta protect the whistleblowers and things like that. And then we see the person blow the whistle and then that person like eats it, you know what I mean?
Oh, we've seen that a lot in the last year, even federally especially.
Well, yeah, for me, yeah, would be the Justice Minister, right? Um, Wilson Raybold there. You know, she, she blows the whistle and yet her career is finished now. Right? She's, she's sitting as an independent, almost guarantee she's not gonna win another seat as an independent. You need the party behind you, right?
Yeah.
So it's, that to me is a disgrace, you know what I mean? So going back to your point, if we can't protect people, you know, police officers that are gonna talk about other police officers, so we can kind of rid the force of these guys that are making them look bad. You know, we, we're gonna continue to have these problems.
I see the cat behind you. I just saw him poking. Um, yeah, yeah, I mean, we'll move, let's move on from that topic because that's just an unwinnable argument. I just, I hope that, I hope that things do get better with the police. And as I said, I just, it's such a, like, oh, there he goes upstairs. Um, it's such a hard job that how can, like, there's, there's just, there's not a lineup of people willing to do that job and I don't blame them. And we, we need to be careful about that. We really do. Because it's an essential thing in our city. And if we make it such a hard job to do and such a discouraged job to do, uh, you know, people retire, people move on and we need to fill those spots. So we gotta, we gotta be careful here. It's a slippery slope.
Yeah, we're in a position where we could lose like a generation of, of first responders like that.
Yeah, for sure.
We gotta be, it's exactly, say, we gotta be careful. And I actually took the attitude the other, a little bit recently that, you know, um, we show so much reverence for our military and, and obviously rightfully so. I mean, we sit under their blanket of freedom every night. And, and full respect and appreciation of that. But I was starting to think like, man, we need to start showing our police officers and our ambulance workers and our, and also our doctors and nurses that same respect. Do you know what I mean? Because without them, I mean, yeah, of course, nobody, the people in these positions never will get paid enough. Do you know what I mean? There's no amount of money that we can pay somebody to say, this is acceptable money for you to save multiple lives a day. Do you know what I mean? Who put, how can you put a number on that?
And even I, I don't know if you'll agree with me on this one, but I, 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 I love teachers into that, too. I mean, that is a job that I could.
Actually, I do apologize for leaving teachers out of that.
Yeah, that's a job I couldn't do. I could not do that job. You couldn't pay me enough. I could not do it, so.
Well, especially now, and I'm gonna hammer today's parent, right? Like, you know, when I was a little.
Awful the parents today, but keep going.
Yeah, like, when I was a little kid, if I got a bad grade in school, my mom made me study harder and gave me shit. Nowadays, if a kid gets a bad grade in school, they go to the teacher and ask, why'd you give my kid an ass? Do you know what I mean? And that's the change in mentality of, of, and that's, you know, parents wanna say, parents say like, what's wrong with kids today? Parents today?
Yeah, I, I have friends and family that are teachers, even principals, and that is not untrue. They're, one of, one of them is a principal and said basically like, yeah, it's lookout for the parents nowadays. Well, which is crazy.
That's one of the things, you know, that keeps, you know, guys away from coaching minor hockey and, and things like that, right? When I, I coached, um, my niece's junior high wrestling school team. And the one thing my, when my brother asked me to do it, the only caveat I had is I never have to talk to a parent.
That's so you.
Right. Well, I mean, I, I'm so glad the parents want their kids in wrestling, but nine, nine and point nine out of ten parents at wrestling have never wrestled before. So at no point will I ever wanna hear your opinion about what I'm doing.
Right, like, I, yeah, I think of my dad. My dad wrestled in high school and, yeah, I, if he tried to tell you what to do, it's like, dad, shut up.
I might, I would listen to somebody if I, you know, if you know them and know they come from that background, but, you know, a lot of times, parents like,
Class, though.
This is gonna sound really chauvinistic, but I, I, my brother coached football for a long time, like, um, junior football, right? Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old kids. And then you'd go sit in the stands and listen to the moms hollering out what, for the kids what to do.
Oh, God.
And I just wanna look at the mom and say, well, when did you take your last snap, mom? What do you like? Just want.
It's like.
Cheer your kid on and watch the game and enjoy the time.
Me and my friends always make fun of, I mean, it's a different, different level. But whenever we go to the Flames games and there's always people in the crowd on the power plate yelling, shoot! My one friend, he always goes, shoot, I'm a fan. I know what's best for this team.
Yeah, was it, was it Ken Holland in Detroit that was, um, somebody was asking on the media, like, do you care what the media says about you? You know, and he goes, no, because most of the people that talk about hockey, if they knew anything about hockey, they'd be in hockey.
Yeah, true. Yeah, even like, yeah, when I write stuff on, you know, Facebook and I'm talking about the Flames, I'm like. I really don't know. I, like, you know, I understand the sport pretty well, but.
Yeah.
Uh, the best is when people try to give their evaluations of what's going on in the locker room and stuff. I'm like, you don't, you have no idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Even even the media guys, I have no idea, like chill out.
Yeah, well, that's what I always, I always laugh at these, um, well, I don't always laugh at them, but, you know, you watch these three hour long TV podcasts on hockey. And it's like, Ken, there's no way there's enough for you to talk about in hockey to come up that you, at some point, you have to be making shit up.
Oh, of course, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, there's, there's all those hockey podcasts and they start talking about rumors and and it's like. Where did that even come from? Are you just, are you just filling airtime now?
Yeah, exactly. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring us back to um, kind of back to your campaign if we can.
Yeah.
One thing I specifically wanted to ask you, but obviously it's outside your ward. Um, what do you think? Do you, do you have any thoughts on how we can handle sort of what's gonna be very quickly? Once um, after COVID, I think a lot of businesses are gonna realize how easy it is to work from home. And um, I I believe there's gonna be a real, real estate crisis downtown. Um, do you have any thoughts of, because obviously there's gonna be a massive tax base we'd lose there as well? So with the, with already the fiscal irresponsibility at City Hall, couple that with, you know, previously poor economy, followed by a pandemic. Um, any idea on how we sort of what we had to maybe, can we reinvent decor somehow?
I think, yeah, I almost have to at this point because there's, there's buildings. I mean, one of my jobs previously was we did office furnishing. So, you know, when Imperial Oil moved out of downtown, we took all their furniture.
Right.
Resold it. Um, so that building is never, never really been the same as along with many other buildings. So. It's hard because there's been a tax shift from the businesses that are downtown to now, uh, I think of businesses like yours back in the day, your shop. You now had to pay more to cover for these ones that no longer existed. So the easy answer here is, yes, we do have to figure something out, but how do we do that is better question. Um, that's a tough question, and there's gonna have to be a lot of collaboration on that, I think. Is the energy industry ever going to be the same? I don't know. I don't, I, there, there's no question that we still need oil and we still need natural gas. Alberta runs on that. I mean, I don't know about you, but when it was minus thirty in January, I sure liked turning on my furnace, so.
I don't wanna say anything, I'm just saying.
But so, uh, there's. With and and as you, you brought up a really good point, the whole working from home thing. I know that your wife works from home. My wife has worked from home. She has literally not gone to the office a single day in over a year. And so are those spaces still gonna be needed downtown? I think, I think the answer is no. Um, some of them will be needed for sure because you still have to. Nothing truly replaces face to face, and you, you would agree with that more than anybody, I think, but.
Well, no, and I know, like, for instance, where my wife works, they're talking, you know, they're kind of surveying the staff on what they think. And and, you know, even she says for her ultimately, probably three days in the office, two days at home would be a good mix.
Right.
You know, because then you do get that face to face because she actually was just part of a big merger. And has she hasn't met her new team face to face yet, which she says is kind of hard to learn how to read your staff, you know?
Right, so even same with my sister, uh, her company got bought out by a larger company and she. She's a geologist and she hasn't even met the land band that she works with yet, and she's like, how wrong is that? So, but, yeah, there's all these uh, the companies. I I was talking with a guy, uh, an energy executive uh, last week. He's a family friend. It's not like a crazy connection or anything, but um. And I, they have basically a policy where you can come to work if you want to. There's obviously, you know, masks and in your own office and all this stuff. They, they're very safe about it, but. And so they have an open policy. You can come to work or you can work at home. And I said, okay, well, so how many people are coming to work? And he said fifty percent. So fifty percent work from home, fifty percent come to the office. And I think it's, it's situation dependent, of course. I think of uh, my sister, she, she wants to go to the office because she has a three year old. And yeah, good luck working from home with a three year old, right? You're not gonna get anything done, so. That I think there's always gonna be.
You know?
Yeah, yeah.
I feel because I know, you know, my wife is being a manager, she would kind of hear the plight of, you know, us not having children, you know, or small children anyways. Not having that issue, but um, parents were really, especially when they were a parent that's homeschooling. So they're working from home, you know, they're trying to keep their kids out, they got little ones that are trying to keep out of trouble. Then they're trying to homeschool and they, and they really felt like they were failing on three fronts. You know, they didn't feel like they were given enough of their focus to work. They felt like they were constantly putting their kids in front of the TV so they could get their work done. And then they're trying to homeschool their kids and going back to your point about how valuable teachers are. Suddenly, a lot of these parents realize, man, we really need these teachers.
Those teachers are quite valuable, aren't they? A little wake up call.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, going like you say, maybe we better show a little more reverence for our teachers.
Exactly. So back to the idea of downtown, I mean, so if we use that company as an example, which I. That company would be one that I think more people would want to be at the office than a normal company. Um, so.
I think there will be an initial bump. I really do like, initially, people are gonna be like itching to get back to the office.
Oh, yeah.
After ninety, a hundred and twenty days, they'll be looking back to go back to home a couple of days a week.
Even Kristen, she, she, she loves working from home. She quite does. But even she's starting to say, God, it would just be nice to like have other people around and talk to people. And so, yeah, I, will it ever come back a hundred percent the same? I don't think so, but. There is some reimagining we could do of downtown.
Right.
One of the things that I, you know, I say I love the city and I do, but one of the things that I quite dislike about the city is, our downtown is just. At night, it doesn't exist.
Yeah.
I mean, you think of anywhere else and uh, you know, where do you go on the weekend? You you go downtown, so. So that's, that's something we could work on is to make downtown more of a. You know, maybe this isn't the correct word to use, but I'm more of a party atmosphere, somewhere where people want to go.
I think just more of a vibrant space, do you know what I mean? Like, um, I grew up right at the tail end of the Electric Avenue era. Do you know what I mean? While it was starting to get a little bit dodgy down there by the end, um. It was something that drew people downtown and the, and the core restaurants around there, like that, that keg restaurant. Um, Singapore Sam's, you know, there's probably five or six restaurants that the owners became very, very wealthy. Because of that, you know, fifteen bars in a one block strip kind of thing, right? So, you know, like you say, going back to your party, you know, party atmosphere is dangerous because it can't, you know, all of a sudden, different issues. But but at the same time, you're, you're right, we gotta find a way to make it more inviting for people. Um, you know.
The reason to go.
Yeah, exactly. And it did, you know, if you're gonna open a restaurant and you look at the taxation in, you know, the community of Willow Park. Versus the taxation on, you know, Fifth Avenue downtown. Well, you, you're gonna go to Willow Park every time, you know what I mean? So we've got to find incentives to bring these businesses back downtown. And I don't know if, you know, are tax cuts or tax credits the answer? Do you know what I mean? I don't, I don't, I don't really know, but.
It's a very simple thing is the more people that are paying into a tax pool, tool, ultimately, the less everyone has to pay. So is there a way to encourage business, uh, you know, eliminating red tape, eliminating processes? I mean, you, you went through it yourself, Jordy. I mean. Is there things that we could make more efficient that would make your business easier to run, more affordable? Surely there is, so.
Well.
You, you know, I I'm one guy. People say, what's the solution? Well, I have ideas. I don't have the exact solutions, but I'm willing to work with other people and listen to those people, the experts that have these ideas. And and it's clear now more than ever that we need to make changes. Uh, our world has changed more than I would dare say it has in lifetimes. And we need to be able to adapt to that, to change quickly and listen to other people and their ideas to to make positive change happen.
Right. Do you think there's a way, you know, something I've been really pondering? Do you think there's a, an easier way to make it to change laws? Do you know what I mean? Like, for instance. I think it's, there's too much process involved. Like, when you see something, I'm gonna use this. I don't care what side of the debate you and I both, I think, fall on the same side of the debate, but just for argument's sake, I'm gonna use the lowering of the speed limits. As a, as just as an example. Um, okay, so let's say that we know, and there's issues like this, where seventy-five to eighty percent of people agree that we should lower the speed limit in unmarked zones from fifty to forty kilometers an hour. We know simply for the fact eighty percent of people agree with that. There's been a survey done. Why do we gotta spend six months talking about it? Just stroke the pen, change the law. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Like, when, when there's an overwhelming.
Yeah, there's an obvious.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I see that. And I mean, part of that, I mean, I'll tie this back to myself. Here's a little bit of self-promotion, but.
Yeah.
Part of this is. The people that, people are associated with others and I, I think that gets in the way. So for me, on my campaign, and if I was to get elected, I've made it very clear that I, I I am not associated with any political parties. I'm not associated with any unions. I'm not associated with any other candidates. I don't go doing talks with other candidates because quite frankly, I work for the people of Ward eleven. And, yeah, I I I'm not associated with any special interest groups. And I think sometimes that can get in the way of process is people are. Well, I have to be faithful to this party or this union or this, uh, these other candidates or these other council members. And I think that's part of it. For me, having, one of the things that I I don't love about our election laws currently is that these third party groups have so much influence, more than I myself as a candidate can have.
For sure.
Like, it's been written quite a bit that uh, these third parties have huge influence on the election. And then, you know, i- if, if somebody is working for a special interest group or a, a political party. It slows things down. I I think you get what I'm saying.
Well, yeah, I mean, as soon as, as soon as the agenda goes from the people, like you say, you, you work specifically for the constituents of Ward eleven in Calgary. And and quite frankly, I I will say this very openly. Um, if I lived in Ward eleven, I I have looked at some of your other, at your opponents' campaigns. And I would have no problem, you, Rob Ward would get my vote every single time.
Oh, wow, thank you.
Yeah, full endorsement. I mean, I'm not your ward, but for what it's worth, man, I would, I would vote for you all day. Um, and so I think it's important that we have candidates like yourself that, um, you know, are looking for like-minded solutions, like-minded individuals to come up with ideas. Um, because it's time we all get on the same page, do you know what I mean? And if somebody comes in, if, you know, I, I could be wrong, but I believe it's a Taoist, um, an Asian Taoist philosophy that says like, the man that claims to know doesn't. So, you know, when one guy comes in and says, I have all the ideas, I have all the answers, I'm gonna fix the problem. I'm always a little skeptical of that guy because it's always like, okay, you know, I'm the only guy in the room I'm currently sitting in. And I'm not the smartest guy in this room. Um, so when I hear somebody come in with that type of arrogance and say, I'm just simply gonna solve these problems, um, it does concern me. So when I hear someone like yourself come in and say, I don't have all the answers, but I'm willing to listen, is is actually quite refreshing.
Right, like, one of the things that bothers me and so many candidates are doing this, and it's just, to me, it's gross. It's, yeah, I'll say it. It's gross. It's sickening. It's oversimplifying. And and they put on their stuff like, I'm gonna lower taxes. Great, how?
Yeah.
Like, it's, it's, it's such a cheap cop out of a way to get votes and to garner interest and. Like, yeah, I'll be honest, I'd love to lower taxes. I think that's a great goal. But we have things that we need to think about. Uh, yeah, what are, what are we willing to cut? So, okay, we're gonna cut taxes, all right? We're gonna go from, you know, four man crews on the fire trucks to three man crews. So when they show up to your house, you're gonna have one guy on the hydrant, one guy on the pump, and one guy putting out the fire. Is that good enough? I wouldn't want one guy fighting the fire at my house. That's what I'm saying.
Well, and that's, people don't understand, we all, we all, of course, we all want lower taxes. I want more money in my genes, right? Like, I, I think I know, I know how to spend my money better than the government does because I've been to Las Vegas and I would rather spend my money on that.
There's some fiscal responsibility for you.
Yeah, exactly. Um, but, you know, like you say, it's when the cost of living is always going to increase. So people have to be cognizant of the fact that while, when you're gonna have a cost of living increase with inflation. Of course, there has to be a task, tax increase to offset that. So for people to simply say we need to cut taxes is, is asinine. What they need to say is we need to better use our funds to keep the services while increasing taxes minimally.
Well, it's an over, it's, it's a, it's a whole plan, right? It's, it's no different. I, I try to simplify things for people when I talk to them. Um, it's a financial plan, so, you know. Cost of living goes up because inflation goes up because we print money, because we're trying to pay for things that we can't afford to pay for. And then when the interest rates go up and then we have to pay back all those debts, it's just like, you're just crushing yourself. It's like going out to the mall and just filling your credit card without thinking of how am I gonna pay for this? And that's, that's what we need to, we need to buckle down and get serious about this. Like, people say, oh, I want this, I want that, I want that. Well, yeah, I, I, I want a Ferrari and I want an eighty inch TV and I want a brand new golf clubs. Well, sometimes you can't afford what you want and.
Yeah.
You need to work to make things happen. And I, I, I get scared by the simplicity of how people are thinking about our budgets and our spending. And it's scary, man. Like, I don't have any kids, but I guess I have a niece and I'm like. What is the city gonna be if we keep going on this path? We gotta get it together here.
Well, and that's what people don't sort of understand, you know. Um, one of the things about our next liberal generation that's coming up. Um, and I could be wrong about this, and if you know better, please call me out on it. I certainly won't be offended. But I think a lot of them spent more time living at their moms than I did. So when you start talking about how taxes affect people, um, how property taxes affect, you know, a homeowner's bottom line. Um, they don't actually have a cognizant idea of what that is. Do you, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So then it's, it's not a tangible effect when there's a tax increase. They see a tax increase and then they see a service they want to get with that tax increase. But they don't see what it's doing to the person that's paying the tax to provide that service. Um, yeah, then when we, when we don't have enough tax dollars to simply pay for the service, what they don't see is the lack of liquidity. When we're having to service the debt.
Yeah.
Right? And servicing debt is the, is the hardest. Um, it's one thing to put something on your credit card. It's another thing to have a plan to pay for it. Because you can't service the debt forever, and that's where in a position now where we're gonna spend, we're gonna spend almost as money, as much money servicing debt as we are in healthcare.
You know, compounding interest is a scary thing, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. People just don't get it, right? They don't understand when you're, well, we could pay for some of these social programs we want to pay for. Whether I agree or disagree with them, we could probably find a way to pay for them if we weren't spending thirty-four billion dollars a year servicing debt.
Yeah, I mean, that's, people, it's hard, right? I mean, it's not easy. I see the other side of this for sure, is people want things paid for and built and stuff like that, but.
Yeah, I have a grandson. I would love it if my daughter got free childcare, but I don't know how to make that pay, right? I don't know how to make, pay for that.
Right, and and you need to be able to put yourself into a decent financial position to make these things happen long term. So you can't, it's like I said, we can't just go on like this forever. There is, there is a breaking point and I don't want to see that breaking point, to be quite honest.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things we need to look at are our hardcore necessities, like. Um, do I like that the city has a, has a public arts program? I really do. Um, I would rather see, you know, um, the blue ring is the easiest, you know, I think a bully always attacks something at its weakest point. Because the blue ring is, you know, and obviously I don't hate art when you look behind me. I mean, I'm not somebody that's.
Look at you, you cultured man.
Yeah, I'm not somebody that's offended by artwork. Um, but when I, what happens when I have to practice fiscal restraint is the first thing I stop doing is buying artwork. Do you know what I mean? Those, those are um, expendable income types of purchases. And when you don't, when, when I hear the city, you know, we're running massive deficits and we're still running a public arts program. Um, I think that's insane. Cut that off and give that money to actual arts with people. Do you know what I mean? Sorry, give that money to the theater, give that money to those types of arts. Rather than spending half a million dollars on a blue ring that everybody makes fun of and not, like, that's one of those things that I don't want to get off topic here. How the hell did that ever get passed? Like, seriously, how, who greenlit that thing? I would like to honestly go to the alderman to put that shit in and just say like, you are responsible for wasting half a million dollars of taxpayers' money. For what? That thing's an eyesore and you're an a-hole. Whoever voted for that thing, I'm looking in the eye, I'm looking in the camera now telling you, if you're responsible for the half a million dollar blue ring artwork, you're a jerk. On the other side of that, if you're responsible for the big head outside the bow tower, nice job.
That's a better example.
That's something that I, you know, how many people stop and take their picture in front of that big head? How many people stop and take a picture of the blue ring and then make a gross joke about it?
And make a meme out of it, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. You know, one thing's beautiful art and other thing's a joke, right? And that's, you know, and that was at a. You know, and that was at a time when we didn't need to spend that money on that blue ring, right? We could have put that half a million dollars and done a lot of things, a lot of other good things with that.
Yeah, I I talk about that on my on my page a lot too, is that there's there's nice to haves and then there's the basic necessities. So.
Right.
Again, going back to making this into a family's budget, when let's say, you know, God forbid. But let's say you and Wendy were both laid off. Are you going to go buy an eighty inch TV tomorrow?
Exactly.
It's a dumb thing to do, right? So and that's what. That's what we're doing now is we we Calgary's hit hard, so hard and and. We need to focus, like I said, the basics.
Yeah.
Fixing potholes, like clearing the roads.
Yeah, help, you know, helping schools, you know, to me, the solution to most of your problems is education. So again, if we're spending so much money servicing debt, um, I would rather, you know, let's let's get rid of the debt and pay teachers more. Give them more resources to work with, right? And then to me, because that's a basic necessity.
Well, and it's an investment in your future, the city's future, to be honest. Yeah.
You know, you know, streets and potholes, infrastructure is the most important thing, and it's one of those things that people don't notice until it falls apart.
And I think we noticed that last year and it, you know, I'm not going to totally pile on the city that obviously those were extreme circumstances and. But hey, there was a lot of potholes last year, wasn't there?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
So, yeah, that that's the tough part and. You know, I just always think of. Yeah, we just, we getting the budget under control is is just so important and. How we can spend our dollars better, how we can bring, make, you know, I say make Calgary flourish again. That's kind of my saying. And and then the trickle down effect that not being fiscally responsible has, I just shot a video with a local business here the other day. And he says the hardest part of his life right now is paying his bills. Because he's been affected by COVID, obviously, and and increasing rent costs. So. He has this tiny little shop in the strip mall and his rent just keeps going up and he can't understand why it is.
Yeah.
And I said to him, I said, you know, man, it's. Your your landowner is paying more taxes because obviously the downtown does not have as much of a tax base anymore. So they're pushing it out to these other places. So they're paying more tax. So therefore, like, they're not going to just like, you know, if if their tax goes up ten percent, they got to pass that on. Unfortunately, that's the way it works.
Yeah.
And so. The that's another thing that kind of scares me is people don't, they don't quite understand the sort of repercussions and the consequences of. An ever increasing tax rate. And that's that's one thing that really bothered me this last year was, and I'm sure you, when you got your property tax bill and you're like. It went up again.
Yeah.
In a year of a pandemic, when people are struggling like they have never struggled before.
Yeah.
It went up. Like, so if that. And this might be really harsh. This is getting ranty now, but if in a year, if in a year like we just had. We cannot freeze the tax rate. We never will.
Right. For sure.
Honestly, like that should have been the time to freeze the tax.
Well, the thing is, if what. You didn't have, the city as a whole didn't have to maintain a lot of things last year, right? A lot, a lot of city. Um, you know, city run pools and things like that didn't have to actually operate last year. So. You have all, you save so much money on all these operating and maintenance costs. And yet you still hand us, you know, hand us a, what were we at a hundred and at one point we were at a hundred, they were saying we had a hundred and twenty million dollar shortfall. And then, and then, or no, I apologize. It was a sixty million dollar shortfall, but because the way the city currently does their budgeting, correct me if I'm wrong. That after last year's budget, they found they were over budget or they they found another hundred and twenty million basically. After figuring they were sixty million dollars short.
Yeah, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but that sounds about right.
Am I in the ballpark? So then my question at that point is who the fuck is doing our budgeting? Forgive my language. Do you know what I mean? Like, you know, obviously, I'm not working with the numbers the city Calgary is, but if I if I go at the end of the month and look at my budget. And I've I've thought, well, by the end of the month, I'm going to be short, you know, a thousand dollars. And I look and I realize I'm up, you know, two thousand dollars. Well, obviously, I didn't carry the one somewhere, Junior.
That's true. But yeah, I mean, and there's just there's so many things that the city, I I don't know how you feel. I mean, this is a touchy subject, but. For example, I look at the golf courses. It's what I know. I understand decently well. And the golf courses are just bleeding money. I believe Shaganapi is the only one that actually makes money. Now, yes, like, you know, it's, think about this. I mean. This is a little off topic for the people watching, but Maple Ridge is a great golf course. It is always booked.
That's my favorite city course.
Yeah, it's almost impossible to get a tee time there.
Yeah.
And yet it's losing money.
Right.
How does that happen?
You, I'm going to say it for you, Union.
It's part of it for sure. I mean, the wages that the employees make at Maple Ridge compared to the wages that the people make at Willow Park Cross Street. Are significantly higher, sometimes up to one hundred percent higher.
Yeah.
Um, so. And and another part of it is the golf course, I wouldn't say lives and dies, but it certainly helps. Food and beverage and events is huge, absolutely huge. Have you ever heard of a wedding at Maple Ridge or Shaganapi or like?
Right. So you need to diversify that revenue stream.
Absolutely.
Yeah, seven toilet Maple Ridge would actually be a really nice place to get married.
Or Shaganapi, can you imagine on that? I think it's a tenth tee box that overlooks downtown. Wouldn't that be beautiful?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
This is the things that we need to do. It it, the city is failing. Absolutely failing at running these places and turning a profit. So if you can't. And this is harsh and some people are going to hate me for saying it, but. If you can't get a place like Maple Ridge with a full T sheet to run profitable. You shouldn't be in that business.
Yeah, no, and yeah, I couldn't agree with that more. Like, and that's where I come back to, um. I would have no problem. If you privatize those courses. Got rid of the union job. I'm sorry to say that, union people, got rid of the union job and paid those golf course workers market rate for for what they do. Suddenly that course becomes profitable without actually changing very much. Do you know what I mean? Almost instantly profitable when you cut your wages down by a hundred percent. And people are going to get on me and say, well, that's just a lead. It's you're just trying to make money off the man. No, no, I'm trying to keep the golf course open and affordable so that people that aren't paying a hundred dollars for a tee time. Can get a get on a course like you say for forty five or fifty dollars with a full T sheet every single week. The fact that that course loses money has nothing to do with the course. It's how it's being operated. And quite frankly, the union is bankrupting the course.
Yeah, and and I'm I'm sure we've exchanged this before, but the problem when you, I I don't. Full disclosure, I don't hate unions. I don't. And they have their place.
I don't make the money I make today without unions.
Yeah, and they they protect people's rights and I I have been employed at places that don't have unions that treat people like absolute garbage.
Bargaining is an important thing.
Yes, so they have their place, but there there comes a point where you're negotiating your members out of a job.
Yes.
And I I think of a place like Maple Ridge and I I. It's getting to that point, I think. And and you know, Maple Ridge is in my community. We're in Willow Ridge. We call it, it's Willow Park and Maple Ridge. And the people here love Maple Ridge because it's a green space and in the winter they go cross country skiing on it and they enjoy it and. How devastating would it be that because the city couldn't run that business properly, they sell it and it gets developed or something? It would be terrible. That would be absolutely terrible. So. It it's hard and and people. People don't see both sides of everything all the time. So they're 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 pro-union and they're pro-green space. Well. I want to keep that green space, but the union is making it hard to do right now. So.
Well, and again, not to be too hard on unions because I have friends that live on the East Coast. And where the economy just, they don't really have an economy. It just is what it is. And so without unions there, those people are in deep trouble because the 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 business owners could literally pay them whatever they want. And because there's no other jobs, they have to accept it. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But going to your point exactly where you start negotiating your your people out of a job because you price yourself out of the market. And it's, you know, again, um, my wages are based on what union members make. So please don't think that I'm, you know, a hundred percent anti-union. I just think there's a point of diminishing returns in a certain aspect.
And what you said is also true, and you made a very good point that people love the city of Calgary golf courses. I know, I know many people that love those courses because they're. You know, they're easier, they're a little friendlier and the cost is low. Well, to help keep the cost low, I mean, shouldn't we make it a profitable business so we can keep the prices low like?
Yeah. Well, and going to your point about, you know, let's hold some events there. Let's diversify those revenue streams at those courses.
Oh, yeah, like if I if I was able to purchase Shaganapi golf course tomorrow, the first thing I would do is build a proper banquet hall so that I could host events there. It's the first thing I would do.
Yeah. Yeah, see, and that's, we need more of that in City Hall. Do you know what I mean? Because we know, and and not that this is a solution to all these problems, this is one idea that could.
Yeah, this is a fraction of the problem. I want to be very clear.
So we could sound like, hey, if we save these golf courses, our city is going to be, you know, turned to corner.
We're good, we're fixed.
Um, yeah, exactly. But but the other side of that is, once we, okay, so let's let's say we leave them union, right? We leave the union alone, we leave the wages alone.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. But then we can build a banquet hall there and and build a banquet hall in Maple Ridge. So there's going to be some investment. There's going to be an initial layout of cash. But then what's the what's the ROI? How long is it going to take us to get that money back? How long is it going to take those places to become profitable? And then we can create more jobs because people are working events and banquets. Right?
Yeah. So. And and if anything, like. Being very blunt here, the union should support this idea because if I'm going to build a banquet hall, I'm going to get you more jobs.
Exactly. And that to me, what is what it's all about. Um, our economy, whether we want to admit it or not, is based on consumption. And so we have to find other ways and and people, I don't know if I'm going to get any heat for this, but again, you know, I don't care. Um, but we have to find as the city, you have to find more people to consume what the city is selling. So the city can take that money and do other things with it.
For sure. Like, wouldn't it be amazing if our golf courses brought in? Eighty million dollars of profit every year? Can you imagine what that would do for our budget? That'd be amazing. It'd be great.
Well, all of a sudden, we have more money for crisis counselors at at at, um, you know, at at nine one one calls.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, it's, these things fund other things.
Yeah, like everything should be looked at as how can we make this better? And and that's. You know, on the backside of my sign, it says collaborative fiscal responsibility. And I truly do believe that. I mean. Fiscal responsibility, of course, getting our budgets and numbers and everything in line, but collaboration is huge, like. Why is, why is the union and the, say, the city or the managers, why are they at? Odds with each other? It shouldn't be that way. You guys should be working together to find a mutual benefit here. Like I said. If we can build a banquet hall, we can employ more of your union members, which I'm sure they would love. And that that that's what I truly believe in is working together to find solutions to things. I.
Right.
I hate this dysfunctional and disjointed council combative. It's it's just wrong. We got to. We got to find a way to work together. Like, my dad told me growing up, and it's something that is probably one of the things he told me that I remember the most is. You're going to have to work with people that you don't like. It's gonna happen.
Yeah.
But at the end of the day, it's your job to do your job.
Yeah.
And I truly believe that is if if I got elected, is there going to be other counselors that I don't agree with Stefan and I don't particularly like? Of course there is. But. My job is to work with them and get along and get stuff done to make the city better. That's my job.
Yeah, well, I mean, statistically, it's impossible to get along with everybody, period.
It's never gonna happen.
But just because I don't like, and and I think for me, Justin Trudeau is a pretty open example. Just because I don't like Justin Trudeau doesn't mean I think every idea Justin Trudeau has is bad. You know what I mean? So we have to find, I mean, really and truly in politics. Most of us have more common ground than division, but people don't want to admit that, right? Um, and I'll use the latest provincial. Curriculum release, which has been very polarizing. Um, and to be honest with you, I haven't. Um, I haven't gone through it. So I'm kind of speaking on something I don't know, but I'm not going to delve into the facts of it. What I am going to say is. Do U C P release that curriculum? Whether you agree or disagree, the attitude is like our kids are going to, our kids are going to grow up stupid because of this curriculum. And my answer to that is, I'm not going to agree or disagree with that statement. But do you not think the people in U C P have children too? Do you think they want their children to grow up with diminished mental abilities because of the curriculum they?
Yeah, that's a very good point, yeah.
What I mean? And it comes back to that, you know, put yourself in the other guy's shoes and think about what they're thinking for a second. Right or wrong? Those people have children too, and and they're thinking of their children too. So for the other side, for people to just say, well, you're wrong because this. Well, I have kids too that have to deal with all this stuff. So, you know, always look at the other side from that lens too, that they're they have the same dog in the fight you do. Right? Um, whether you win the election or not, right? Of course, I want you to win your election. But I also want whoever does win to succeed.
Yeah.
You know, if you can't win, right? Then I really wish success. I do not like the N D P. That's not a secret. Their fiscal policy is a freaking disaster. Having said that, I hope they're successful if they win an election. Because if they win, we all win.
Yeah, like that. That's the thing that. I hate in our world today, and and I think part of it is the southern, you know, below us, the.
Yeah.
Division that happened there with Trump and everybody is. The 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 party lines are just so like. Ah, here and here, and you can't disagree because. Uh, it's just so wrong and and what you said is so true. So let's say the N D P did win, which. Maybe they will, but to 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 root for them to fail is what is wrong with you?
Yeah, it's asinine, right? Like, these people may not like Jason Kenny and he's not giving anybody a whole lot of, you know, that party's stepping in a steaming bag of burning crap every time they turn around.
Yeah.
But at the same time. I have to wish them success because if they fail, we're in trouble.
Right, you and me that suffer, right?
Well, even if I hate the captain of the ship, I still don't want him to steer us into the rocks.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, it's, you and the other side is, you know, and and again, I'm going to hammer a little bit on Rachel Notley here and and then. Just simply because she's the opposition right now.
Right, fair.
Excuse me. Not because I hate Rachel Notley. I've been accused of not liking women because. I don't like strong women because I didn't like Rachel Notley's policies. Which anybody that knows my wife that puts up with me.
Yeah, I can attest that that is not true.
Yeah, that is a strong woman. Um, but in all of the stuff with COVID. She's actually come out with nothing positive. She's not come up with a good idea and said, hey, can we implement this somehow? There's been no trying to cross the floor and work with the government in power to come up with a solution to COVID. It's literally been standing off to the side and chucking rocks the whole time. Well, I can do that with anything, and it's not helpful. Any more than if the N D P were in there and Randy Bo Bandi, Jason Kenny was standing off to the side, just chucking rocks at them. That's not acceptable. Come to me with, any asshole can point out a problem. Point out the problem and give me a solution. It's pretty simple.
Yeah, and that's why within the city with this election, I, you know, I've said it already, but I just, I. I I really worry about candidates that are aligning with political parties and special interest groups and stuff like that and and other candidates because. Right there, you're ruining the spirit of, I think, what city council is intended to be, which is a collaborative effort to make the entire city better.
Right.
Um. It it's just, you're you're bringing interests of others. In it's conflicting with what you're trying to do and that's that's, it's not right.
I agree with that a hundred percent. And and I've, my thought on it would simply be that. If you're going to run for Calgary City Council under the bound banner of any political or federal party, no matter who it is. Um, my, in my perception at that point becomes that you're only using city count, our city council. To gain experience to move to the next level. And that and that's not, that's not a bad thing. I don't, you know, I don't want to discourage people trying to. Improve our city, then move on to try and improve our province, then move on to try and improve our our country. They have noble intentions. I'm all for it. But having said that, I need to know that you're dedicated to my city and are going to do the best you job you can. And like, to your point, if you're running under somebody else's political banner, are you running on your constituents' agenda or a political party's agenda?
That's what I worry about.
Yeah, right? And and so I think that's a dangerous thing when somebody. Um, if somebody's going to run under a political banner of a provincial or federal party, I think you need to really consider that. There are, there is a perception from a voter like me that says that person doesn't have the city's best interests at heart. They're looking at the provincial or federal the next step ahead.
And it's any, it's it's not even, parties is a big part of it for sure, but even as I said, special interest groups or unions or other candidates, like. You're you're no longer a neutral mind or. Person about.
Right.
The constituents here, you know, if you're voting on a motion and and you're backed by a group or a a union, you're thinking, okay. I have to vote the right way to benefit them.
Right.
And that's, that's where I lose.
Well, that's when we have government for hire, right?
Yeah, and I I just think that's terrible. I, I would never do that.
One of the things that was really polarizing, I think, was maybe I'm overusing that word today. Um, but one of the, one of the things I found interesting is that when Jason Kenny came out with the last round of restrictions. There were seventeen. Um, U C P M L A's that kind of banded together and said, we don't, we don't agree with you.
Right.
And so some people said they shouldn't do that. Some people said they should toe the party line. And my thought on that is. If you're, if you're doing that because you don't agree, then that's a problem. If those seventeen people join that because that's what their constituents told them to do. Then that's what they should have done.
I would agree with that, yeah.
You know, if they're getting an overwhelming sense from their constituents, the the constituents saying, we don't appreciate these restrictions. That's their obligation, not to the party line. To those, so there's part of me that appreciates those seventeen people that dissented, somewhat depending on what their motive was, you know?
Yeah, and, and people are so quick to judge when that happened. And maybe it wasn't, again, it, there's so much in politics today that it, it's a communication issue. It's the way things are communicated that they come off polarizing and divisive. I somewhat blame a bit of the media for that, but
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, tho, those, I, and I don't know. Full disclosure, I don't know. But I think that those people were representing their constituents who had valid concerns. And especially with these COVID shutdowns, people have to understand that there's supply chains and material production and all that that is happening mainly in these, uh, rural settings. So if it, you know, maybe these are affecting a farmer's ability to produce crops. And they're like, well, don't shut us down, cause then it affects our ability to produce crop, crops to feed the people of Alberta. I, I don't know. Maybe that's the reason, maybe it's not.
Like, we were talking about earlier, everybody has, kind of has to look out for their own interests, right?
And, and they do.
Yeah. But, but, but to me, if I'm looking out for my own interest, I bring that interest to, and all you, you know, if I have an interest of what's going on in my community, I bring that to you and it's up to you to bring that forward. Do you know what I mean? If you turn around and say, well, Jordan, I can't bring that forward because our party believes this.
That's terrible.
Exactly.
I would never do that.
Well, that, and, and that's the problem with a lot of politicians today is they won't vote. You know, it comes down to sort of voting in parliament and things like that. They don't vote oftentimes based on what their constituents actually want. You know, when you have an overwhelming number of people that don't want a gun registry or don't want gun control to change, um, and it just changes, well, you're not listening to your constituents at that point. You know, you're listening to a vocal minority that probably don't, wouldn't own a gun no matter what anyways.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I worry about most is just, we forget who we work for. Well, I say we, I'm not a politician yet, but if I was.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I truly, I, I wouldn't forget who I work for, cause it's just like, as I said, I'm not, I'm not in this, this isn't me trying to get a job or me trying to become a career politician. It's not about that. It's about serving the people, making Calgary flourish again, all that. It's I just, I, and I hope the people see that and, you know, many people like you have sort of, uh, given your word, that is what I'm about and I appreciate that, cause it's true.
Well, I've known you for a really long time and, and truthfully, I mean, I've known you for now, it's gotta be for sure the better part of a decade, right?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Um, and I've never exchanged an unkind word with you. We've never had a falling out because we're both somewhat reasonable human beings. So if we disagree on something, we can usually find a common ground.
Oh, yeah. And we've had some pretty polarizing disagreements, I'd say, and
Yeah, like I, I would.
Able to talk it out.
Yeah, for sure, because we both understand that there's an idea and there's a common ground. Um, and I really, really believe that that's probably the most important thing I could offer to an endorsement of you and your campaign is that, um, it really is all about a collaborative effort. It really is about, um, inclusion and, you know, um, a wide variety of opinion. Right? I know, you know, I watch your Facebook page and you, sir, do not live in an echo chamber.
Wow, okay, good.
Yeah.
No wonder.
You know, I've seen a lot of your friends go pretty hard in the paint on some of your opinions. And, and that's, that's not saying either of you were right or wrong. But it tells me that you have a, um, a diverse group of friends with a diverse group of opinions. And, and that, that's, that to me is one of the most important things, right? So.
And I, I love that. I love to hear all sides of an issue, all sides of the argument because you know, it's so easy to just put your hands over your ears and just, oh, I'm right, I'm the expert, blah, blah, blah. No.
Yeah.
I, I wanna hear the other side, cause it's valuable. And if anything, it makes your side stronger, cause you can learn how to be better, right? So, like, yeah, I, I love hearing from, and I, and I say that on my cards I hand out and I say that when I talk to people, like, if you have an issue that you want looked at or solved, please tell me, please, cause I wanna hear it. I honestly, genuinely do. I want to represent you. I want to make things better, so.
On that note, my friend, um, tell people how they can follow you. How can they find your platform?
This is a flipped camera, isn't it? There we go. So my website is rawboardeleven.ca and I'm on Facebook. It's, uh, facebook.com/rauboardforward11. And my Instagram is rawboardforward11. I'm not on Twitter. I don't love Twitter. I don't know how some people do Twitter. I've heard you say so many times, it's just a terrible way to communicate with what is a hundred characters. It's just bad. So, yeah, those are the way to follow me. You can email me info at rawboard11.ca. Those are actually answered by me, read by me, not by somebody from my team. I will read them, I will respond to you, and I'd love to hear from you.
Uh, man, I appreciate your time. I, I really appreciate you coming on the show and, and having such a, that was, this has been a really fun chat, man. I really, um, I'm really glad we did this.
I'm so glad we did this. To think back to the year of whatever it was, two thousand and two, when you yelled at me and said something that I cannot repeat. And now we've come all this way to have a nice friendly chat. It's
Yeah.
Uh, I'm glad we did this and I'm glad, honestly, I'm glad that you started to do podcasts and I, you know, I've done podcasts in the past and I know it can be difficult. You see the views and you're like, oh, that one didn't really hit. Keep going, because for, it doesn't matter how many people listen. I listen and it entertains me and I like it, so keep doing it.
Thank you so much, brother, and we will talk to you again very soon.
Thank you.
Take care, pal.